We are live and unmuted. Hey, welcome, everybody. We are at the workshop portion of our agenda tonight. Which is budget.
Take off? Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me share my screen here. We've had a, this is our third budget work session that we've had. As you recall, about a month ago, we talked about capital expenditures and capital projects for next year. The last budget work session, we talked about operational maintenance cost. So what I want to talk about today is proposed personnel cost for the 2022. Let me get my screen a little less complicated. So first of all, I want to talk a bit about some challenges that we're facing here in Frazier. We currently have authorization to hire 26, to have 26 full-time employees, one full-time or one permanent part-time employee and four seasonal employees. Right now, we are, we have five vacancies, full-time vacancies, and all of the five of those are in the public works department. And we have not been able to hire any seasonal employees this past year. And that causes some workplace shortages, and it's really going to challenge us moving into, you know, the winter season with the snow removal, with having, you know, five less bodies available. So right now, we're running about eighty percent of our staffing level. That's, that's townwide and in the public works department, that's probably closer to sixty percent staffing level. And again, when the seasonal help is always a problem, we've been trying to recruit for some time for some positions. In fact, one position has been vacant for over fifteen months. That's the O and M superintendent position. This is a high-level kind of upper management job in the public works department. And we just simply can't find, you know, people to apply and come to interviews. So our recruitment efforts really aren't working there. So I wanted to look at our staffing strategy from twenty, for 2022 in two different ways. Number one, I wanted to address our recruitment efforts that we have and how we might be able to find ways that we can hire the talent that we need here in town. And the second is, I want to make sure that we have good retention policies in place so that we take care of the employees that we've got. We really can't afford to lose more employees. I think the US Department of Labor said that in, for example, an O and M superintendent position, it can cost you up to one and a half times that person's salary to replace them. So every time we lose someone, we, we lose productivity, we, we spread ourselves too thin. We're asking our employees to do more with less. So again, we're looking at recruitment and we're going to look at some incentives that I'm proposing and some of our retention efforts that we'd like to, to see in 2022. So the first thing that I'll talk about is recruitment. Right now, we just simply run a job ad. We hopefully get some applicants and we schedule an interview and and sometimes they show up and sometimes they just, they just don't ever call back. So what we're proposing is we want to make it attractive to those people that we're trying to hire. So I'm proposing that we put a signing bonus of $4,000 per position that's, that's available right now. I'm also proposing a relocation assistance of $5,000. This is not an unusual benefit for hiring somebody that has to move in from outside the region. But one of the things that we want to address as well is, is how do we handle that housing situation, especially on a short-term basis? Not everybody will come at a, at a salary level like, like I did, and even still, I ran into challenges myself trying to find housing. I was extremely lucky with how I did, how I, where I landed, but not everybody's in that same position. So we're looking for up to $1,000 a month for up to six months for a housing assistance. This means the new hires could receive between $4,000 and $15,000 in incentives for signing with the town. We believe that would be an attractive recruitment tool to get people to think a little bit beyond, oh, Frazier, that sounds nice. Well, Frazier really wants us there and maybe we can make it happen. So the total recruitment budget, if you base that off of the five vacancies that we have, and that all totals up to a budget of about $75,000 that we want to be able to have set aside. The last thing about this is the American Rescue Plans, those funds that we received, and we're going to receive about three hundred and twenty-seven thousand between this year and next year. We've already spent about seventy thousand with assistance to grandkids and also the radio station. But those funds can also be used to rehire public sector employees. So I would propose that we use seventy-five thousand of that portion of the American Rescue Plan funds to pay for those recruitment incentives.
Well, if they don't currently have a place to live, they're going to have to buy some.
Maybe rent.
Not, not maybe, that's a, that's, yeah, there's twelve hundred people waiting to get units.
The other part of this proposal is the actual payroll cost, and now we're talking about retention. How do we, how to reward our current employees? And how do we put policies in place of it, so that they don't want to leave the town? Our current 2021 payroll budget was 1.161 million dollars. We're proposing in 2022, a budget of 1.26 million. That's a nine percent increase or a hundred and four thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. The ninth percent was came, came about looking at the Denver Consumer Price Index, which depends on which market you look at, fluctuates over the past 12 months between 3.1% and four and a half percent. 3.1 is if you do not include food and energy costs, and 4.5 is more of the, the total complete package. So a 4% cost of living allowance would allow staff to stay ahead of inflation. And this cost of living allowance doesn't just necessarily affect people's current position now, but it also affects the pay range in which they work within. So that pay range would adjust that have a longer tenure of, of seeing continued growth and salary increases over their, over their career with the town. We're also combining that with a 5% merit increase, and this rewards town employees for their commitment to the town, for the hard work that they do. And that nine percent is also in line with other mountain communities. As a comparison, I listed Frazier at nine percent. Winter Park is also proposing a nine percent increase, which includes a 4% cost of living allowance and a 5% merit. Granby is proposing a seven and a half percent, again, the four and a, 4% colon, three and a half percent merit. Grand Lake is going a 10% cost of living allowance across the board. The manager there said that they have been behind the times for some time, and they want to bring this back up. And a two and a half percent merit increase, and both Crested Butte and Eagle are also at nine percent. So the nine percent is in line with what other mountain communities are doing. The thing is, it can be paid for. All of the funds except for our water fund can absorb those, those cost increase. To make the water fund whole, we would simply reduce the transfer to strategic reserves from $150,000 to $100,000 in 2022.
And that's to cover the, the wage increases just for the water?
Well, we, we allocate payroll cost across all the funds, depends on their impact within, within certain divisions. Our water employees typically fall directly underwater, but we've also got a portion of my salary falls underwater since I oversee and manage that. The same thing with Russell, Beth, and there's a few other employees because of the nature of the work. We allocate the cost of, of portions of their cost for their salary out of these different funds. The next step is we would like to take a look at our employee benefits. I think our benefits are pretty good right now, but I'd like to make a couple of recommendations. The first recommendation is to add two additional paid holidays. I just threw out a couple here that's subject to what the, what the staff and what the board would like to see. For example, I threw June, Juneteenth, which with this, just this past summer, was declared a new federal holiday, and also Christmas Eve, and that would give the town a total of 11 paid holidays. That is in line with a lot of Colorado municipalities. In my last community, we had 11 paid holidays. I think Fort Col, Fort Collins had 11 paid holidays. Other communities have, you know, ten or eleven. And to me, that's, that's, I think that's an easy, easy reward for our employees. It doesn't necessarily cost us anything, except that, you know, there's someone that's not going to be here to answer the phone on that particular day. But it does give the employees a little bit more time to enjoy this community.
Curious. So if someone works on the paid holiday, do they get time and a half?
They typically get double time, right? Yes, it is. I believe the town at one time had Veterans Day, but that got changed to the day after Thanksgiving. I'd also propose that we raise the town match for our, our, our employee retirement funds. We have a 401A plan, which is mandatory. We require the employees to contribute 4% of their, of their pay. And the town matches that 4%. There's a five-year vesting period for the 401A. It's, it's a state plan, but it's, it's mandatory for everyone. We also have an optional 457B retirement plan. The town currently only will match up to 2% of an employee's contribution. I would be requesting that we raise both of those two plans, raise the max to by 2%. So the 401A, we would keep the mandatory 4%, and we're still working with our, with the retirement organization to see how this would look. The mandatory 4%, but have employees have an option if they want to put an extra 2% into their state function to retirement, the town would match that as by 2%. The same thing with the 457. Another benefit that is extremely popular, not just with staff, but also with board members, with commissioners, with families. We have a lot of visitors that come to see us up here in the mountains and, and the Grand Pass and the Gold Passes that the town has been buying over the past years have been extremely, extremely popular. And competition for those passes can be, can be pretty stiff sometimes. Like to buy two more of those passes, two more Gold Passes and two more of the Grand Passes, and that would start the 2022, 2023 season. It's too late now to get those extra passes, but we would do that probably next fall.
And I would like to mention that we did buy two additional Grand Passes this year over last year.
Thank you. So the cost for this, let me see if I can get rid of this bar down here. The cost for these benefits, the entire state, the town retirement match would be, we'd budget $78,022. I will say that not every employee contributes to the 457. But those who do would appreciate the extra, extra percentage or extra contribution by the town. So we would budget an event that everyone wanted to, to take advantage of this. And the Golden Grand Passes will be approximately another $13,750. Start off with I want to say fifteen or eighteen days from day one, and then it goes up the longer you're with the town, you get, you get blocks of additional time. I'm not exactly sure, Antonette, do you, do you know those?
So for the first year, you get a hundred and four hours, and then your second second year.
After your first year.
After your first year. Seven hundred and forty-four hours, and then after you reach your third year, you get an additional, I believe, 20 hours. Once you begin your fourth year, and then I think again on your seventh year, you get an additional 40 hours.
So with the 401A and 457B increases, would that be a total of 10%? If it's going from four to six and two to four?
I'm sorry. It would go from four to six and from two to four. So that's four percent, pretty much, 2% for each fund.
Right.
We now change dollar for dollar.
That's, yeah.
If we, we'll mark 6%. So if someone contributes 10%, we'll, we will only match 6%.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. That's a little more. I mean, in the private sector, I've never been matched more than 3%. So 6% is a, is really high, I think, but I, I don't know. That seems, that seems out of whack a little bit to me, but.
I think I've had a couple of 7%.
We were in, my last community, we we did a similar increase to the town match, and we tied that to a a pay raise at the end of the year. So it was easy for people to enroll. We brought in consultants to have do some retirement counseling for the people, and I think we raised the town match to rather the cap of about 6% for the 457. We also had a 401A plan, and I think we raised that up to 6% as well, but we graduated that 401A plan because it is tied to to tenure and a vesting period. But I, I don't, from my experience, the 6% is not out of line in, in, in the public sector.
That is a five-year vesting period here at the town school.
So 401A, so 457, you're best to be in. That's just IRS thing.
But we're not matching the 457, is that correct? We're only matching the.
We currently match the 457 up to 2%. And we would be proposing matching that up to 4%. The 457 is, is a, is a advantageous plan because employees can take loans from the 457 plan. And I think there are some qualified loans, for example, down payment for homes and so forth. They could be taken advantage of without tax penalties, whereas the 401A is, is not quite as flexible. Okay. But.
But it is 6% for the 401, plus 4% for the.
Right.
So that is 10%.
Yeah, they're getting an additional 10% added onto their salary of this benefit.
Could be.
That's, yeah, that seems a lot, a lot.
Did, did anybody take the time to compare it to be the contract out the work that we need versus having our own employees?
I've just been too busy with his day-to-day operations to go look at contracting all of our, our services part. I'm, you know, I, I don't mind looking at that, but no, I have not had any kind of direction to kind of do that kind of investigative work. We have looked at a couple of positions about doing some contract work. For example, maybe extra engineering, extra planning services. But we haven't done a, across the board, you know, let's outsource snowplow winter.
So if we're short snowplow drivers at this point, and we don't get anybody hired on a train, we're just going to overtax the people we already have to plow the roads, or just not plow, start doing what Denver does.
I'll let Russell. No, actually, we have our utility operators that were required to have their CDLs as well as kind of a backup. And so we're going to be utilized, we have not been utilizing those folks in that role because they, you know, they do have a full-time job on the utility side. But they will be stepping into these roles because we do have three operator positions open, and we have three utility operators. So and then we've also did ask a lot of the entire staff, because it's, we only have one, you, a public works employee that does not have their CDO. So, so it's all hands on deck, and we're offering overtime and, and any, any type that, you know, when, when we do have a snowfall, people are stepping up and, and offering to, to, to work overtime.
So yes.
So that, that's up into including myself. I do have my CDO, so I've offered to put my, put me in a seat somewhere if I have to, if it becomes to that point to help out.
What needs to be done, right?
So in summary, this is just kind of a cost breakdown of what we would be, what's proposing, and we'd like to hear the town's input and thoughts about what was discussed tonight. The, the 4% colon, 5% merit, a hundred and four thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars being the budget. The contribution increase of 78,000 and 13,000 for the extra passes. And then the ARP funds for recruitment, again, would not come out of the general fund or the water fund, they would come out of those American Rescue Plan funds, 75,000.
So I'm just curious on the recruitment dollars, how that works that you ensure that you know, that they're here and they're coming before we load them up with cash.
I have to have an employment contract signed and, and agreement reached. So, you know, as far as the details of how this would be, I envisioned that, for example, temporary housing assistance would be tied to what their lease is. The thousand dollars is a maximum. You know, if they, if they can find a lease arrangement or rental temporary that's 650 a month, we would drop that to 650 for the six-month period. Not everybody will be moving in from out of state or even from outside of the county. If we find somebody locally, there'll be no need for relocation bonus as well. And that may not, and they may not even qualify for, you know, the, the temporary housing assistance as well. But what I want to be able to do is if we want to find an operations and maintenance supervisor, which I, which is kind of just a step down from what Russell does, you know, someone that's kind of overseeing kind of a whole division of our public works, that person is going to be recruited at a salary around $90,000. And we want to make sure that we, for that price that we're getting, the talent that, the people with the skill sets that, that we need and could be a benefit to the town. And we may not find them in Grand County. We may not even find them in Summit County or Moffett or Routh County. They may be somewhere in a Denver suburb or some other place. It's a challenge for people to, you know, even my first interview question was, did you look at the price of housing before you, you apply for this? Well, people are doing their research and they know what the price of housing is. And they'll find out real quick with just a few searches on the internet what that, what that could look like. So I want to put a, a package together that would, that gives them some incentive to say, can I make this work? Instead of just turning their back on that and saying, no, that's, that's just too much for me. You know, there's a certain people that we want to attract, not only for their skill sets, but people like me and Russell and Antonette and Michael, people that love the mountains and, and love this area and don't mind getting there, jumping in to a smaller community and, and becoming a part of the organization. So I need to find a way to incentivize them to do that because, like I said, our recruitment work efforts are simply not working. Our last promotion, we hired Jeff Lundee. You saw my report last week. Jeff Lundee was an internal hire. You know, he was an equipment operator, but he had the experience we needed, and he applied. We made him a street super supervisor. That just left us an opening this for the operator position. We got lucky with Jeff, and we haven't been lucky with the other positions that were, that were vacant.
So I wonder if we could make those bonuses a little more flexible and try and attract local people as that would overcome this, this barrier of, we've tried and get people hopefully not robbing Peter to pay Paul, but somehow get them attracted to, to come onboard with the town. They already have housing, they already live here, they're established. They already have housing, they already live here, they're established. So I kind of, I wonder if we couldn't roll that housing bonus and that, that um other bonus in, in with a lump sum for anybody that, that we can hire, so.
I'm open to suggestions, you know.
Because like Parnell said, I mean, we, you know, the housing's not out there. If we can hire people that have housing, obviously that's a huge advantage.
Just, just so you know, I talked to a Ed Moyer at the Canada, because I heard they, they're struggling with, with their workforce. They have fifty five vacancies in their road bridge. It's fifty five people that they would love to hire and the people that they would hire would probably come from people who worked in public sector, you know, road maintenance and and I would not want to see one of our current employees decide to go work at the county because.
You got a better package.
You know, they got a better package.
Yeah.
I'd rather take care of the employees that we've got here. Same thing with uh, Grand Lake or any other community, I just wouldn't want to see.
If there's, if there's somebody in the community that has a skill set and they're trying to decide where to go, I hope we're one of the most attractive, or the most attractive place to come to, so, without breaking the bank copies.
Obviously, and I also I don't want to be in a position where other communities feel like we're scalping their employees as well. So I don't want to make those incentives too rich.
Yeah. But we have a higher cost of living here than any other place in the county. At least, one of the advantages to working in county road bridge, you can work the west end. It's a little more affordable there, but it's getting increasingly steep too, but still.
We could also offer a, a little flexibility, uh, delegate it down to me to work with, with our department heads who are trying to recruit these positions. There may be that one candidate that the housing location housing assistance may not be applicable, but
We need.
Kind of piggyback on what you say, he's got skills in other directions and maybe we boosted that sign bonus. Again, I've got to look at equity, I've got to look at fairness uh across these positions. Try to keep to a large degree, those kind of decisions kind of on the down low, quiet, we just don't want the word to get out. We do offer some flexibility. For example, we, we could offer relocation assistance. I think that's something that uh, it's kind of a call that I would make someone really wanted the job and need to uh, to move here. I would find some way to bring some relocation assistance. We can show flexibility and things like that, starting vacation limit looks like. What I don't want to do is I don't want to go outside of our, our pay study, I don't go outside of those established job descriptions. I want to keep people within those, within those barriers. Cost of living increase, like I said, adjust those barriers there, but again, I want to make sure that, that that we are keeping our employers and reward. And this is, I think, the first time we've actually separated cost of living from merit. I think in the past, we've always just budgeted a, you know, five percent across the board. And that's a good budgeting tool, but good budget number, but it doesn't allow us to keep track of how inflation is affecting our workforce here. So by adjusting for the cost of living, there may be some years where the cost of living is five percent. Well, we may want to reduce the merit there. Sometimes the, the cost of living may be, may slow down, but we have to have some kind of flexibility.
It's the housing part of the cost of living that's the really top one to crack, obviously.
Unfortunately, I can't buy everybody their house.
No, I know.
I'd love to.
They have to be able to afford to have a roof over their heads.
So this, this problem is not unique to us. This is national. I mean, you, if you can't even park at Pike's Peak lot, because Denver, which has lots of housing, can't find people to work, so uh, I mean, I'm all for recruiting people. Housing discussion later on.
So are there any other questions or concerns about this?
What, you know, my concern is the biggest issue is housing. We got to figure out how to streamline housing projects, especially for people that want to do affordable housing, workforce housing. There's not much profit in it. I know everybody thinks there's a ton of profit, but there's not. There's a ton of profit, that's what everybody built. Nobody's building it because they can't make the numbers work.
Mike and I are meeting with the owners of uh the village, what's that called? That deal fell through, so Mike and I have a appointment to meet Thursday of this week. We're also meeting with a, a finance advisor who can we want to get some ideas and thoughts about how financing packages get to go together. We came to the board uh, a couple of weeks ago or a couple of months ago, we talked about this mobile home right here on the other side of the public works building. And we were thinking, let's renovate that so that could be a temporary house, you know, for a short period. Well, Mike and I have had a discussion about that. Quite frankly, we feel that by working with the planning department, we might be able to just sell off that existing building, they can holler it away, and we've got a fiveplex townhouse there.
Yeah.
And now you, now you're addressing more housing needs and you could dedicate one or two or maybe even three, or just keep the whole thing for workforce.
Housing.
You know, as a, on a rental basis. There's several options we can do, but we can't, I don't think we can move fast enough to have to address the housing issue to address the shortages we have. So how are we gonna, how are we gonna hire the people? How are we gonna entice them? You offered me a five thousand dollar relocation notice. I believe you offered me as, as well, a temporary housing. But I don't recall if that was true or not. Anyway, even with all of that, I found a place to stay fairly quickly. When I called it affordable, maybe not to someone making eighty thousand dollars a year, or some of these positions are only making fifty thousand dollars a year, fifty three thousand dollars a year. That's that's twenty thousand dollars below our average median income uh for this region.
Yeah, Mike, what's that number that you use that somebody makes fifty thousand a year, they can spend thirty percent on housing? Yeah, how did that, so, but if we use fifty instead of the seventy two thousand, that's the median.
Fifty is, I think the A M I, the hundred percent A M I for one person is it's around sixty thousand? Yeah.
Yeah, I can't remember the number either, sorry.
But yes, in that range of, for one person, if you're looking at a hundred percent A M I, it's, I think between fifty five and sixty. For a couple of people who are, if you have a working couple where they're both bringing income, the average median income is about seventy five thousand.
So if you, when I look at our twenty twenty one salaries, I look at the positions that we have and what's been assigned to their salary, I think we have eleven positions in our town that are fifty three thousand dollars and less. And these are your, kind of your entry level equipment operators, maybe one step up. That's a struggle, it's a struggle to find somebody that that wants to come in and work under these conditions. Yes, we do give benefits and there's health insurance and so forth, but I think the mindset, the paradigm that we've been under where this type of employee should only make so much. I, I think that needs to be reevaluated, especially. So changing the, the cost of living, changing those uh, those scales up allows us to hire a higher rate than that fifty three thousand dollars that we might have hired before. It, it bumps that category up so that so that now you're hiring somebody at more than fifty seven thousand.
So an equation to look at, this would be, I, I think, we could figure, because Parnell, I mean, I, I agree, there's some room regulatory wise to make this work, but, but in the end, we're gonna have to subsidize it. And I think, you know, can we look at the cost of actually building housing, building a fiveplex over here that would house five town employees versus the amount of money we'd have to pay them to go out of the market and get a, uh, get housing. So I, I bet even with the cost of construction, we could save money by going down the housing route and have um, a, a real recruitment tool, you know, here's an apartment. And, and a fifty thousand dollar a year job with health insurance and everything else and, and an affordable rent level. And I, and I think we can fill these positions, but I'm just afraid that we can't regulate our way out of this crisis where the, the price of housing has gotten so high that we're just gonna have to subsidize it to the point where it can be built, so. But with the restrictions and guarantees, lifetime guarantees that it remains as employee housing, so. And that was that, that session that's, that at the municipal league conference where they showed that graph, where here's the price of housing, here's the wages, and these two have just gotten so skewed that we can't bridge that, that gap by increasing density, and we need to. Those are some tools we can use, but in the, in the long run, we've got to find money sources to build housing, so.
I would agree.
Well, we can't do it without good staff.
No.
The town cannot function without good staff. And, um, and for short staffed, it burns everybody else out and so.
And it makes it more likely we're gonna lose people too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I support, you know, Brian's point about it actually being like a ten percent match altogether, that's, that does seem a, a little high. You know, to bring it back down to four and four, it's not that big of a chunk out of what you've got here. But, uh, but that would be my only comment.
I think Beth probably has more better numbers on this, because, but I asked her, I said, how many people contribute to their backs? And it's a small percentage of employees that, that actually, that actually do.
Might help with the retention of those people.
Free money.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it kind of seems like a false benefit then. Like, why don't we put that money towards something else that they'll use right now? More appealing to them. Right?
Just so you know, before we started matching it, there was one person that did the four fifty seven. We put out the match, we have like thirteen, fifteen people last two years.
It's, I mean, I think it's a good benefit. I don't think we should cut it, but I mean, I just think maybe we keep it as is look at that money going somewhere else.
So one of the things that, the philosophies that go behind, you know, pay and benefits is, is you want that long range commitment. When you want somebody, when you hire somebody, your expectation is, especially in government, works fifteen, twenty, thirty years. You know, you would put an investment in them. This is an investment toward their future. For the four fifties, uh, the four oh one K is mandatory four percent, people have to contribute to that. Some people aren't in a position where they can contribute. But the idea of, of having a match, having a, a future due to that match helps to retain employees. It may, it may not necessarily, you can't spend your retirement, you know, contribution. You can't buy groceries with it or pay your rent with it. But it creates a commitment, you know, a long range commitment of that employee.
Yeah, I mean, definitely understand that, especially with the five year vesting period, but.
But if the boards doesn't want to go with the, the employee contribution, that's fine, and maybe like, like Brian was talking about, those phones could be used
Yeah.
For housing, then the employee would just have more money to invest in whenever they want. Wouldn't have to be into, into the two things that we offer at the town. You can put it into their Roth IRA or whatever they want it, or stock market or anything. And with the housing is more appealing, I think.
Well, the nice thing for the town is if we put it towards housing, then it's a one time expense for the town rather than an annual expense.
Our investment for the town.
Right.
I know this is all hitting you, uh, we've got about a month before it's scheduled to improve the budget, but I wanted to present this. With discussion, we've still got twenty minutes, I'd like to pick this part of it more. I'd like to hear your, your thoughts about that. Let me ask a question. The cola, the four percent and the five percent merit is any objections to that? Is it too much? Is it not enough?
I'm not worried about the cost of getting good employees. That, to me, is something you want to have. Where I have a problem with this, we're arguing over where to get the money out of our budget. And I keep looking at this legal fee of two hundred and twenty five to a hundred and twenty five for a lawsuit to put a second layer of protection over open space. And I think that sends the wrong message to the people around here that we care more about open space than we do about the employees, the people that live in the town. I've said that since the beginning of the lawsuit. It's about the same number that we're looking for to hire people. I think the private citizens that benefit from that easement want to put money into the lawsuit, they should put it in. I think our money should go towards making the town a better town. Making this a better place to live and putting a conservation easement over what's already open space doesn't do that.
I think many would argue that uh, if that open space turns into buildings, then that's gone forever and that's a loss.
It can't turn into buildings. The open space is open space. Conservation easement only puts a further protection layer on it. So that the future generations aren't allowed to change it when they want to change it.
And I, I think it's worth that extra protection.
Yeah, then I recommend you guys put money into the fund to handle the lawsuit. Why should the taxpayers that don't benefit from it, they don't know about it, pay for it? So they don't have housing, they don't have jobs.
The budget now.
This is the budget, that's what I'm talking about.
Okay.
We're gonna spend a hundred and seventy five thousand, we've already spent a hundred and forty thousand. It could be a hundred and seventy five thousand per year, we don't know yet.
Or maybe it'll be less. We don't, we'll just have to see how it washes out.
I think you're on the right track, Ed, with that, with those, those um, numbers. I mean, that's, that's the minimum I think we, we can do to try and recruit.
The merit increase, that's each employee gets that five percent. Because in the past, sometimes it would just be taken out of the and it was divvied up differently.
I, I don't know how it was divvied up in the past. Uh, I was under the impression from conversations that if they budgeted a five percent increase, it's just kind of across the board. What wasn't considered during those increases is the cost of living changes. So a, you know, if the cost of living is four and a half percent, you give a five percent raise, that comes out to half percent increase in their disposable income. And that's difficult for someone to get ahead. It's difficult for someone to put money aside uh, to build up or adapt. Send them against to college or whatever, whatever that, that is. So breaking out the cost of living increases, we are, is a way that we can ensure that we're always going to be paying those employees a sustainable wage. Even if there's no merit increase, they would see that to help them stay even with or slightly ahead of inflation, so that they're not losing money every year. And the five percent is not out of life like the town's done in the past. Since that we're asking for the four percent.
There's two uh, questions in the chat. I know these are public hearings, but uh someone asked a question, would the A P R fund be a wash instead of a cost added to the budget? As I explained, that would be a wash. You could use those uh, A R P funds. And the other question was, can you use uh, the uh, the rescue funds to sub, sub, subsidize affordable housing? The answer to that would be no. Can I go down the list? And, you know, let's, let's start with uh with, with the recruitment aspect. The seventy five thousand dollars of the American Rescue Funds.
So we had, if we can, if we were to use more than seventy five thousand, is that available or are we?
It is.
Okay.
It is.
Because to me, that's, and that's where I want you to have, I, I think you should have as much flexibility as possible, because again, recruiting somebody that's already here is a huge plus, because they're a lot more likely to stay too, so.
If, if the idea of using the American Rescue Funds, and I think that If if the idea of using the American Rescue Funds, and I think there needs to be some kind of cap on that, because there are other purposes that it can be used for.
Do we have a lump sum?
We received a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, I believe.
So that's that's that's.
And next year we'll receive another hundred and sixty-seven thousand. Right now, our budget is, we have about ninety thousand dollars remaining at the two end from our first distribution.
And we lose that if we don't use it?
Like those, no. It rolls into uh next year, they'll give us a hundred and sixty-seven thousand.
Yeah. Does the rest of that money earmarked for anything? Is the rest of that money earmarked for anything?
We had tried to earmark that with in conjunction with the DOLA Back to Business Grant. And we had several business owners who had made application, had done everything we asked, then we did not get the DOLA grant. And that was a large chunk of of the cost coverage for these for the business assistance. And because of that, some of these projects were eighty, hundred thousand dollars, and we were there to use these two funds and their match to give them assistance. Well, that one, again, the DOLA funds went away, that whole plan just got a follow-up. So we don't have anything earmarked. It can be used for uh for infrastructure, water and sewer infrastructure. Uh, we do have an industrial pretreatment program that wastewater paint is going through right now. We'd have to evaluate what those recommendations would mean, but that could be a way to offset some of those potentially increased costs. For the brewery and the destroy discharges and how how they get treated. We just have to explore some different options. And I think that's probably a good work session, probably September, January.
And the only problem I have, Andy, with marketing to the local people that are already in towns, you're still in people that are working for other companies. You're gonna leave those companies shorthanded by using their tax dollars to work against them. Seems a little unfair.
It's marketplace.
It's also why we should look at subcontracting the workout.
Yeah.
It's take a year to do that part out. We can't do that at budget time, and then it's gonna take a full year to really look into that, that subject to see if it's viable enough, so. I'd encourage you to spend this next months before the next budget, see if that's a viable process with the town staff, so. I really don't want to give the message to our staff either, though, that that's something that's gonna happen all of a sudden, or we're gonna, we are gonna lose people.
If I if I could make a such suggestion, if if the consensus of the board is, would they would be okay with using the American Rescue Funds for the recruitment efforts? Now, the seventy-five thousand dollars of target is a target. It also could be adjustable. It could be adjusted up, it could get just down. If we find that our recruitment efforts are not meeting our goals, we may have to have another discussion about maybe increasing that or refocusing how those funds are allocated. Depends on the responses we're getting. So the question I would have is is would the board be okay with using those funds for recruit?
Absolutely. I would even, I'd even be in favor of using more, because I I really believe that if we work hard over the next year, we can make some progress on employee housing. And this is as bad as it's gonna get, if I suspect that commitment that this is a crisis we're trying to get through, so.
So the next question I have, again, comes down to that, the payroll question. The four percent merit, uh, cost of living increase and the five percent merit increase. Again, this is in line. The funds are available with our current revenue projections. It's in line with whether the communities are doing. Thoughts here?
Yeah, I think it makes sense.
Hearing no objection, I'm gonna make sure that that's part of our budget now, our budget numbers. I think these numbers are already included in the draft budget in your packet. The next three questions I have has to do with some of those employee benefits, the vacation time. Adding two extra paid holidays. Again, this isn't a cost to us, this is a benefit to employees.
Yeah, I think it's a good.
I think they're nice benefits.
Yeah, people appreciate it and it's it's more appreciated than it is expensive.
The passes, again, that's an extra thirteen thousand dollars, that is a minimal cost, has a maximum benefit. I would encourage.
What's the difference between a gold pass and a grand pass? I know I've asked that in the past, but I don't remember.
The grand pass comes from the Grand Foundation and it supports directly the Grand Foundation and some of their funding. And that basically is a grand county pass. It has a couple days at Steamboat and maybe a couple days at Copper. And the Colorado Pass is basically all, most of the ski resorts in the state minus the Vale Resorts. So it's probably about twenty resorts that you can use that at with no blackout dates on on any of the passes.
The grand passes also give discounts at local restaurants. It can be used year round. In fact, a lot of our employees would use that to take the gondola up for lunch or something.
And that also comes with golf passes, if we have that many, or maybe we'd be able to share those with the oh, and the recs too.
Okay, the fact that I play golf has nothing to do with that.
Just have a golf tournament.
Are, would the board be okay with the extra passes?
Yes.
The last question, there was a lot of discussion about that and we is is the increase for retirement match? It does not have to be two percent each. We can keep the four oh one A right at four percent where it is, because that's mandatory. And maybe look at just adjusting the four fifty-seven B alone, so that would be instead of a six percent match, we'd be doing equipment to up to an eight percent match for employees there.
Yeah.
I think that's a good.
Yeah, okay.
And no other objections. This is the budget that is gonna be presented. Next work session, we're gonna have pretty much the draft budget for one last look. The first of December, that board meeting is when we'll bring the the budget, public hearing, tax levy, certification, resolution for our appropriations and the public hearing for the budget. We've also got several other renewals that have to occur about the same time, some leases and so forth. That that will be pretty much the bulk of.
Can I ask about the flashing lights in terms of the crosswalks? So I had, um, we're looking at the cost and I also wanted to ask Glenn, if once they've been installed at Winter Park, has it made a difference on accidents at crosswalks or people, cars being rear ended? Let's start with Brian.
Don't believe so.
You haven't seen, you're still getting them?
When were they installed though?
The, those lights were installed, I believe, like midsummer, something like that, so they haven't been in very long.
Yeah, it's gonna be the wintertime. Yeah. I I I did, I did talk up to a couple of your officers one day. For uniformity between the two towns, it might make sense instead of they they were, they said to you that it, they didn't see any decrease and.
Yeah, the, if if you were to move forward on something like that, the only thing I would suggest is that you install those flashing lights higher. One of the issues we've seen in Winter Park and and this was all done per C dot specs, but they're low enough that if you're in the inside lane and there is anything other than a a very small car in the outside lane, you cannot see those flashing lights. And uh in I I, like I said, it's C dot.
Well, it's interesting, because when we did our project, they wouldn't let us do it, have the flashing lights.
So Russell did some research, I think. Did you find out the cost on them or what do you got to say?
I mean, just, I've installed these before and it's roughly about twenty, well, these are few year old numbers, but it was about twenty thousand dollars a crossing.
Okay.
And we are just a little bit unique between us and and Winter Park, where we do have the medians. So my recommendation would be looking at also putting a uh an additional rectangular rapid flashing beaking in the in the medium as well to make it even more visible. So you'd have three across and one in the middle, like I said. So it's roughly about twenty thousand dollars, so we have three crossings, so it'd be sixty thousand dollars ish.
One one thing that they did say that our our median lights that we have now create shadows at night.
Yeah.
And it's hard to actually see people in which I thought was interesting. I thought it would light up, but but it's creating some shadows there, where it's hard to see some people in those crosswalks, so.
Well, I I just. Flashing lights, when it's hard to be catch my attention. There's a lot of times even during the day, you know, I'll see that pedestrian, but then I'll notice the flashing light, it's like, whoa, there's somebody in the crosswalk.
Well, they do have seven lanes of basically asphalt between the parking, the suicide line in the middle that a pedestrian is is exposed there, so that's a long exposure where here in Frazier, we do have the median, so. Uh, we have two of the three crosswalks only have one lane that you're crossing. So you're looking one direction, hit a median, look another. So the one uh right over here on Frazier Avenue, you're crossing two lanes each, so you're 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 crossing about uh roughly twenty feet before you have a median and refuge there.
Yeah.
So it's 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 a much, but I think you have better visibility here than you do in in Winter Park, because of the exposure, number of cars, number of things going on there. So pedestrian does get lost a lot quicker than they say do they do here.
It's that rear ending thing, you know, people stopping and then.
Hmm.
Okay, well, anyway, if I wanted to just run it by the board about adding that sixty thousand into our budget to the flashing lights more identification on the three crosswalks.
Well, it sounds like it could be way more than sixty, something like if it's twenty or twenty-five, a few years ago, it's probably more and then the middle.
Russell, would you like to expand a little bit?
We want to get an actual number before we.
Yeah. Well, actually, if if directed by the board, we do have around fifty thousand to sixty thousand in the budget this year for that type of product. So it's something that I could take a look at if if so directed by the board to do so. That they could be actually fitted in into this year's budget.
I'd like to have a look at it at least.
Yeah.
Well, I like the idea. My issue is the way people cross the road and they think they're pedestrians, so they just step out in front of cars.
Yeah.
Yeah, there is.
Cars lock up their brakes.
Now, there is a a very, uh, that that is one of the misconceptions that I run into quite often when I'm I'm talking to pedestrians. They they, you know, they do say they have the right of way and they just walk straight out there. They do, and correct me if I'm wrong, chief, is there is a uh wording that they have to be safely established within the crosswalk, so they just can't jump out and somebody and they have to lock the brakes up. They have to be established safely, so that's.
So there was something they had to push to wait. Right, so the lights flash, then they say, yeah, lock, maybe that would.
That's what the button says on those, so.
Okay. Change their mentality, we can protect them by putting a flashing light in the middle and protect the driver from.
Okay, sounds like.
So.
I don't think that's, we can decide that in a workshop.
Right, but but yeah.
Please take a look.
Yeah, take a look at it, get his number.
Thank you.
Okay, well, will do.
So thanks for protecting from themselves.
Okay, three minute break.
Alright.
Okay, I'd like to call to order the town of Frazier's regular meeting on Wednesday, November third, twenty twenty-one at seven oh six P M. Can I please have a roll call?
Katie Fisher.
Andy Miller.
Eileen Waldo.
Bart Al Quinn.
Brian Sirkbennick.
Katie Souls.
Philip Vanderneil. So we want to, before we make the motion or somebody makes a motion to approve the agenda, we'd like to move. The incentive. Six A up in front of five eight. So if I can have somebody make that motion with that change, that'd be wonderful. So.
Can we just so move?
Yeah.
So move. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes the minutes from October twentieth?
So move.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Hey, we are now at. Discussion and possible action. First Amendment to Economic Inducences and incentives for Watt Investment L L P.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Board of Trustees. Nathan Watt is here with us. I'd like to introduce Nathan. Nathan is the owner and the builder of vicious.
This cycle brewing.
Vicious cycle brewing. That's the new brewery that's going in right on Highway forty. As most of you are aware, Nathan was offered the economic inducements package. And he's been working diligently on this project. He and I have been in contact in the past couple of months about the progress on that. His current inducements expire essentially January the first. Because the agreement says that he has to have a certificate of occupancy by January the first of twenty twenty-two. And I asked Nathan if he felt like that was still reachable. Believes it is mostly, but we want a little insurance. So I've added Nathan to come here tonight, talk a little bit about how his. His his construction is going and what his plans are there.
So, yeah, we got the approval for the economic incentives and I think it was like November of twenty nineteen. And then when COVID happened, our bank put our loan on hold. We lost the whole summer of twenty twenty for construction. So we've made a lot of progress this summer. We're essentially done with the exterior, just a couple small things to button up. We only have a little bit more to do inside. I'm like ninety-five percent sure that we'll get our temporary C O, you know, before January first. And then we'll open our doors in January. Sometime because it takes three weeks to brew beer and have it all ready to open up. But I think we'll definitely have the temporary C O, you know, towards mid-December. But I never saw a pandemic, a pandemic happening either. So we just want to make sure that we have a little extension on those incentives. Like, you know, four, six months, something like that, just just so I don't have to sweat that either.
So if I can elaborate, the temporary C O would be issued and he's been in contact with the building department of Winter Park. The temporary C O would be issued to allow him to open because the remaining items that on his list for the full C O. Is mainly outdoor landscaping, which you really can't accomplish during this time of the year.
Right, that's that's really the only thing that we would have left, you know, to do outside is the, like the trees and shrubs that we need to have. So we'd have to wait till spring. So Rick, the building inspector, Winter Park, said, you know, we'd get you the temporary. And then in spring, when he got that done, we'd get the full C O. Actually, didn't know if that qualified for those incentives, if the temporary is good enough. You know, for the incentives or not.
Well, the agreement technically says a C O.
Yeah.
It doesn't say a full C O or temporary C O. So the purpose and Nathan and I talked and he officially requested that we grant a six-month extension. On here, I've worked with Kent Whitmer to put together an agreement. That kind of matches the intent and captures that extra time for him to do to finish his work. So we're bringing this to the Board of Trustees tonight. To approve the extensions.
Great. That it looks great. I really impressed with what you're with what you're doing there. Tops that food truck out there is looking.
Yeah.
It is bright.
Yeah, it's bright. I like it. I mean, it pops your eye.
Oh, it's great.
Your really your white walls. I'm just gonna ask, are those you're gonna do murals on?
Yeah, definitely. We're still planning on doing the mural.
Yeah.
But obviously, that probably will wait till next spring as well. But yeah, definitely want a mural on there. Yeah, not bad for just my wife and I and my mom and dad doing everything.
Peaked in the window the other day. It looks nice.
Yeah, stop by anytime. I'm there every day.
But so. So there's no laps.
That's still valid.
Right, and then we began an extension, but no laps in between.
That's correct.
And then we've had this question with extensions in the past. Is there, there's a guarantee on completion?
I think the guarantees are remedies. You know, if if the project is not completed, we, the, this just extends the time period. The original agreement still talks about. You know, it could be repayment of those incentives. You know. But I don't believe, I believe, Catherine, you can let me know if I'm if I'm wrong or not. But was there any kind of, with the development, any kind of surety at all?
Okay, so there's a sure. Yes, okay.
Does this holder? Try to say this right. With this, by granting them the extension, would we have to grant everybody in that program an extension or do we have the right to pick and choose?
If you have the right to judge with if someone requested approval to extend that or not.
That's why I ask if there was any break in the extension.
Would they be entitled to their incentives when they get their temporary C O? Or would they have to wait to get those incentives until after?
The C O, not the temporary C O.
Okay.
Part of the incentive is already in place, the one that they did pay some permit fees and that was part of the incentive. So some of that's already been granted, but.
Yeah, as far as the sales.
But some of those incentives are also factored in on some of Nathan's cost as well. You know, I think some of the construction, the parking lot and. The trail next to his building, there were some concerns there about about funding that obligation. And actually, he brought up the fact, oh, never mind, I got incentives that have to pay for that.
Yeah, we took care of the trail and that's nation paving.
Thank you.
Okay, any other? Any public comment? And just to remind you, you need to identify yourself and give your general area of where you live, town of Frazier or not. And everybody gets three minutes and three minutes only and no coming back to. So make sure you get all your questions in the first time. So anybody in the audience here. Okay, anybody online digitally raise your hand? I don't see any. Does anybody see any? Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve a six-month extension to the economic inducements and incentives. For Watt Investments.
I would second that.
All in favor? Opposed? Okay, congrats.
Thanks, you guys.
I love the look. I just love the look. And all those folks in Grand Park, they're gonna have a local tavern. They're gonna be so happy.
Okay, we are now at Resolution twenty twenty-one eleven zero one amended final. That's supposed to be plant. Plant and preliminary plat. Plan. Plan and preliminary plat for the Willow's Apartments. So we're gonna, Catherine's gonna open this up and. Do a little quick discussion and we're gonna let. The applicant respond and then we'll open it up to public comments after that and then. Back to the board.
Thanks for having me, Catherine Trotter, Town Planner. Just wanted to give a little bit of background information of why this is here in front of you tonight. The Planning Commission had a public hearing on the preliminary plat and the final plan amendment number two last week on October twenty-seventh. This was to go in front of the Planning Commission back in May, but there were challenges with the adjacent property owner notification. And then this was supposed to go to Planning Commission for the same public hearing back in July. And if you remember, the the board exercised some of the remedies in the annexation agreement and that meeting was canceled. After the judge, the judge's ruling on the Friday before Labor Day. There wasn't enough notification time to get this to Planning Commission on in September. So it was finally before the Planning Commission last week. And at that Planning Commission meeting, there were several concerns that were voiced by the town attorney. Kent Whitmer and staff, and there were four deficiencies that the staff had. Detailed in the. Planner briefing. And as a result of that, we, the town code allows for a push-up mechanism. So the the staff had asked the Planning Commission to push up the decision of the preliminary plat. And the final plan amendment two for the Willow's Apartments to the town board. So that is what's happening tonight. It's not a public hearing. It's just a push-up that the code allows for the town board to weigh in on this. And in the end, there was a resolution in the Planning Commission packet. And the Planning Commission did not act on the resolution. So they didn't come out and formally deny the application. They requested that this get pushed up to town board. So that's what's happening. So I'm gonna give a little bit of background similar to what I gave at the Planning Commission meeting at the last meeting. Michael, if you could please put up the PDF attachment. Not that one, the other one. Yeah, so this is also behind me for those here that want to take a look at it. This is the land use plan that is sheet six of eleven in the Grand Park P D D. The Grand Park P D D is a recorded document. A copy of that was in the Planning Commission packet last week and it was also in the town board packet. And just wanted to remind folks that this document was approved by the Frazier Town Board back in two thousand and five. And this plant, this land use plan that's shown here on the monitors breaks up the total acreage of thirteen hundred acres. Into different planning areas. And what this. Plan Development Plan does is allows different land uses and different entitlements. For each of these planning areas. So it has approximate acreage listed here on the site data chart. It also has the land use and the total number of residential and commercial and lodging units. Allowed per this Plan Development District Plan. Also noted in this plan are development standards. And when I say development standards, I'm talking about setbacks. Front, rear and back. I'm talking about open space requirements. I'm talking about maximum height of structures. So all of these entitlements were given to Grand Park back in two thousand and five. The other document that's referenced within the briefing is the two thousand and three annexation agreement. So again, these documents were approved by the town many years ago. And the developer is entitled to the land uses and densities listed on this plan. So the area that we're talking about tonight is two W, which I don't know if you can. For the people here, it's this area right here. And I don't know.
Catherine, just for clarification, that road that goes down across the meadow was not in that exact location.
That's right.
Is there, is there a road that's gonna attach that location at that intersection of Rendezvous Road?
Well, we were asked several years ago to relocate a portion of that road. And rename First Street to Grand Park Drive, and that was done several years ago. So now that road comes through the village and the road that's shown here heading over to Rendezvous Road is not constructed.
We're still asking that to be built, though?
Well, it is in their traffic plan and I think that's yet to be determined and the board will need to weigh in on that. So again, the area that we're talking about now for this development application is Planning Area two W. That area is comprised of approximately thirty-three point eight acres. It allows for an average density of seven point six units per acre. The development standards there allow for zero setbacks, except there's a fifteen-foot improvement setback. And a twenty-foot building setback to Old Victory Road. There is a ten percent open space requirement within that planning area two W. And there's a seventy-five foot height limit. So the structures can go up to seventy-five feet. Currently, there have been fifty-five units platted within Planning Area two W. So several years ago, the town approved. The Willow's filings, one, two, three and four. And the final plan associated with those filings allowed for, initially, it was seventy residential units. And that planning area is allowed a hundred and fifty residential units. Actually, it's two hundred, it's a hundred and fifty detached, a hundred attached, two seventy-eight lodging units and thirty thousand square feet of commercial. So the original final plan for this area that the town approved back when filings one, two, three and four were approved. Had seventy residential units on there. There was a final plan amendment two that reduced those number of units down to sixty-seven. And the first three filings were recorded and houses were built on fifty-five of those lots. Filing four has not been recorded and this area for the Willow's Apartments. Would take the place of filing four. So there's some reference on the on the final plan and that's why the first three filings are included on this amendment two. Because this would eliminate the filing for Willow's plat that was never recorded. And there was also a lot line adjustment in filing two at the Willow's between lots twenty-five and twenty-six. So that's why this is amendment number two. So between the fifty-five lots that are already created and the two hundred and four that the applicant is proposing now. That is going to require a density transfer from a different planning area, which is in allowed use in the two thousand and three annexation agreements. So the applicant has requested that nine residential units get transferred from Planning Area five W. Which if you could scooch that down a little bit, the other way, five W is the Elk Creek filings. And that final plan has seventy units accounted for. And the allowed density within five W is a hundred units. So if you subtract out this nine, that would allow twenty-one more units to be planted in five W. So we want that documented on the final plan. There wasn't much time between the Planning Commission meeting on the twenty-seventh and then the date that this packet went out, which was the very next day, the twenty-eighth. So basically, the information in your packet was everything that was in the Planning Commission packet. And on Friday. The twenty-ninth, we received a revised plat from Leila Rosales at Terexina Design. Clark's Planner. And they submitted a revised final plan that dealt with two of the deficiencies. That we had spent two and a half hours talking about at the Planning Commission meeting. So that was loaded to your packet and labeled as a revised final plan yesterday afternoon. And there is also. And there is also a resolution in your packet that recommends approval of this preliminary plan and final plan amendment 2 with conditions. So with this revised final plan that came in on Friday, two of the deficiencies that we have been talking about with the applicant since March of 21 have been eliminated. So previously, there were parts of 23W, which is the open space area in the meadow, were wrapped into the Oh, can you put that other map up, please? Um, what Michael's going to pull up is sheet 4, which is the boundary plan of the revised plan that was submitted on Friday to us. So previously, there were parts of 23W within the development area, and we had asked the applicant to remove those. And there were also future development areas listed on the previous plat that the planning commission reviewed last week as 2W.3 and 2W.4, which encroached out into the open space area. And so we had asked the applicant to remove those as well. We typically send the applications out to outside agencies for review comments. And all of those comments were in the planning commission packet and also in the town board packet. I did hear just before the meeting that there was an issue with the link on the public comment, so I apologize for that. If you didn't get to see those comments, you can go back to the planning commission packet from last week. There were, I think, two additional comments that were added to this one, but Antonet's also going to try to fix that link and republish the tonight's packet tomorrow. So there were some agency review comments that still need to be dealt with. There were town of Fraser comments in the packet that dealt with construction standards and utility standards. And there were some outside engineering review comments from Merrick and Company. That's our outside engineering consulting firm that had some construction and drainage comments in there that need to be dealt with. And the two other deficiencies that were referenced in both the attorney correspondence, in addition to the briefing from the planning commission meeting was the lack of a commitment to dedicate and pave Old Victory Road. And then basically, the fourth deficiency was the lack of of addressing the sewer capacity issue. And there was some brief discussion about Old Victory Road at the planning commission meeting. And there was also some discussion in regard to the sewer capacity issue, but I think that was the first time that we had heard anything from the applicant was at that planning commission meeting. And again, these four deficiencies have been discussed for many months with the applicant. Um, some of the technical planning issues that we had talked about in the planning commission briefing on the final plan have been corrected with the revised plan that was submitted on Friday. So we do have a resolution in your packet. We still have a concern about the timing of the dedication and paving of Old Victory Road. The construction documents that we've received to date do not have the highway crossing in there. And
Sewer crossing?
I'm sorry, what did I say? Yeah, sorry, the sewer crossing in Highway 40. We've also been asked to fast-track this development application. So we did receive a final plat application. We've asked the planning commission if they're able to have a special meeting next Wednesday night. I don't know at this point if I'm if I'm able to have a quorum. I haven't heard from all the planning commissioners yet. But I will note that the documents that were submitted in the final plat were pretty much the same documents that were submitted in the preliminary plat. There was a subdivision improvement agreement in that final plat submittal. There was an engineer's cost estimate in that packet, too, the final plat packet. I guess I question the engineer's cost estimate and how accurate it is if the construction documents haven't been finalized yet. And we've received no additional construction documents other than those dated June of this year. So I don't know if you want me to go over the resolution or if you want to go ahead and hear from the applicant first.
Trustees, questions for Catherine?
On the revised FPDP, the third attachment there, it seems like there's different plans for the same area. Is that true? Am I seeing that correctly? Like, the very first one on page 3 has, like, development around a cul-de-sac at the end of American Willow Drive, and then the other ones have sort of a circular drive with other things built around it. Am I right?
I think that you're better to answer that question. We'll go ahead and turn it over to those guys.
Thank you, Catherine. It's a lot of work, good work.
I have one more question for you before you, now that you've already sat down. Why are we fast-tracking this? Why were we asked to, can you explain that to our, to us?
I think I'm going to go ahead and defer that question to either the applicant or Ed.
Okay. I'll take a stab at this. I'm sure Clark will talk on this as well. Clark had applied for financing, HUD financing. Of course, between the the notification errors there back in May and the the actions the town took, the timeline became a question. And Clark has forwarded me, we actually got a copy of this, of an extension request and approval for an extension from HUD for the financing for this project, and that HUD financing will expire. And I think the letter says without, this will be the last extension, no exceptions, December the 2nd. So Clark had asked if I could, if we could still make this happen. So we had several conversations with with Kent, with Catherine, myself, to see if we could accommodate Clark's request to meet his his financing timelines. We felt that there was a path forward. It would require a special meeting of the the planning commission. And we addressed some at the time. Some of those, we call it critical flaws, but some of those those concerns that we had. And now those concerns apparently have been addressed based on the latest submittal. And and that's why the board is putting together, our staff is putting together recommendation to approve this.
Thank you, Leila.
I'm I'm joined, yep. So you can, you would do that, I would appreciate it. Leila Rosales, Terracina Design, Denver. I've got a brief presentation for you. Clark is handing out the presentation that's up on the screen. Should be up on the screen. Is the hard copy that's in front of our trustees tonight?
We can share.
Appreciate you taking the time to meet with us tonight. As Catherine already stated, we did do a little bit of a hustle work to try and get some changes made after planning commission last week, and we're trying to get to get a revised plan in front of you all by the end of last week. So hopefully you've had a chance to at least glance at it. Maybe that's all as far as it's gotten, but we feel like we've addressed some of the air comments that came out of staff and planning commission last week. So for those of you who weren't in attendance last week, let me walk you through our plans. What this project is going to look like, we're pretty excited about it. I get to do the fun stuff and show you pretty pictures and so as you are all aware, the site here is located in the meadow. This is kind of along Old Victory Road, and this kind of just shows you some context on some of the developments that is both happened already, as well as some of the, you know, post-development, especially around the village area in this spot. I want to really quickly, just again, and I think I said this at planning commission as well. We are going to change the name of this project. We're going to brand it as something else. So when you do see this, you know, when staff sees it kind of as it gets finalized and and ready to go to my hours, it'll be called Something Amazing. We haven't branded it yet. Maybe just call it amazing. But anyway, so it won't be called the Willow's Apartments. So just just for the record, so folks, when when you do see some documents coming through that are posted, it will have a different name, but it is still the 2W planning area in the PDPP at Grand Park. So I'm going to start with that. So what what are we, what are we looking at here? So what I wanted to show, what this kind of demonstrates for you is the planning area boundary that we're proposing as part of this FPDP. And, you know, kind of just showing you in context of Old Victory Road on the bottom of the page, the railroad, at the top of the page, Highway 40, as well as the Fraser Rec Center. So it gives you a little bit of context around what it is that we're talking about today. And it's this area here on the bottom of the of the screen. I think that's a gray hatchet. But what we're looking at, as Catherine already mentioned, is 204 multifamily units in this particular project. And I'm going to go to the next page because this is the pretty one. We've got two building types here. One is a 12-unit building and one is an 18-unit building. We've got about 50% two bedrooms, 25% one bed, oh, sorry, 35% one bedrooms and 15% two bedrooms on this particular neighborhood. We do meet all of the development criteria in both the code and the PDD. So setbacks, building heights, parking requirements, open space requirements, snow storage, all of those kind of technical components. This particular neighborhood does does meet. And actually, in this instance, the open spaces is significantly above the 10%. I want to say it's something closer to like 30% on this particular neighborhood. The other thing I want to share with you is the building heights on this is Catherine did state. The building heights for this neighborhood are permitted to be 75 feet. These buildings are 41 feet. So, you know, we felt like that was appropriate based on the homes that are in existence there along the meadow, being able to do something that transitions that building height. We also did, as you can kind of see, looking at this site plan, we did spend a lot of time kind of thinking about what that edge looks like for those homeowners, trying to meander those, trying to provide a little bit of buffer, trying to, you know, we didn't want to do a wall of 75-foot buildings in front of those existing homes. And so we did really take that into account as we designed this and laid out this particular neighborhood that you're looking at today. I'm going to kind of, the next couple of slides are just some renderings, some pictures. I've got a photo renderer who does some cool stuff and kind of shows what these apartments are going to look like from various locations. So here's a view from Highway 40 with with the multifamily units shown there. And this is actually the clubhouse here in the front with the homes back behind it there. Again, 45-foot height. This is again from, actually, this is closer to the rec center, kind of looking a little bit to the north there, kind of north, northwest. This is off of Old Victory Road. So the next two slides you're going to look at are kind of just views from Old Victory Road. This is basically Old Victory Road and Grand Park Drive. And you can see the kind of the clubhouse kind of back back in here in this view line. This is from Old Victory Road on the other side of the community. So this is over at the Cousins Meadow neighborhood. Looking back at the mountains. And again, as you hit closer, so this is would be from Old Victory Road and Mountain Willow Drive. So being able to kind of see what what these look like, just giving you lots of views, kind of perception on kind of what how this is going to feel in the neighborhood. We think it's going to fit well. This is our typical building rendering. So this, you know, materials and stuff will vary, colors will vary between the buildings themselves, but this gives you a good feel for what what these are going to look like in the exterior. This is the clubhouse. So again, the clubhouse is on a, oh, go to that here a second. We're providing some really nice amenities as part of this community. So we've got a clubhouse that you're seeing here, and this is kind of our concept doodle. But we're including a swimming pool, a large party spa, a race spa, lots of spas, barbecue counters, pool decks, yoga game lawn. So there's a really nice, you know, outdoor amenity space along the meadow here, which I think will be actually a nice, just attractive thing to be able to look at from both the meadow as well as for them to be able to look out facing south towards the towards the ski resort. There will also be fitness, a fitness room as part of the clubhouse itself. There's a ski storage building. And then just playgrounds and some fun kind of, you know, ski lift benches. It's the fun stuff that we're just incorporating into this, just to provide some fun details into this. So what this slide shows is really, you know, again, going back to what Catherine was talking about here a little bit ago, were kind of those four deficiencies, as she called them, coming out of planning commission and just kind of how we've addressed those. It's nothing that you haven't already seen, but 23W, like, like she said, has been removed as is shown in the final plan. The future development areas have been also removed from this final plan. And then the dedication of the right-of-way and constructing sewer crossings, you know, we both agreed to. And they was were also part of the correspondence that the attorney had sent back earlier, I guess, last month now. How is it November? Last month. So we feel like we've kind of, you know, worked through some of the concerns coming out of planning commission last week. We did look at the resolution and the conditions associated with this approval from staff today. I think the only one that I personally want to address, that Clark might want to address another one, and it's really just a clarification, is around the latest edition that you had, which was talking about the public transit plan and wanting to understand what specifically we feel like the public transit plan is actually, as it relates to public transit, is actually identical to what's shown in 3WC and public transit being obviously bus routes, right? Those are the public transit is. So wanting to understand specifically what it was that we're missing in this, Catherine, so that we can address that as needed, because we're, I'm a little bit unclear on that particular condition. I want to be sure that it's clear as we as we work through that.
I think it's different than what was in the public transit plan in the final plan, which was sheet 12 of the meadows.
And in what perspective do you have a specific for me? So that looked, I thought that we had addressed all of the public transit pieces.
I think there was some access that was labeled differently. And since that document in the meadows final plan has already been approved, it made the most sense to match the document that's already been approved.
If I can, that plan also on sheet 12 that you talked about, talked about not just the public transportation routes, the bus routes, but it also showed trails.
Right.
In that, in that area.
So what what about, I mean, the trails were shown probably as a mistake, but what what part of trails or public transit, I guess, would be my question?
The actual, it's not called public transit plan, it's a public transportation plan.
No, it's called a public transit plan. Yeah.
So you've got a copy of sheet 12?
Yeah, so the requirements in the FPDP say a plan showing how the developments residents will be afforded access to public transit and how the transit system will be integrated into the development. So this is part of the final PD plan checklist that's in code. So I thought we met it. So I'm just wanting to, I just want to understand.
Sure.
So that's the only condition that I have some questions on. And if you want to think about how that needs to get reworded or what we need to do with that, that's the only one that I want, would like. that's the only one that I want, would like some to be addressed before we, you know, finalize and make an action on this would be appreciated. I think the only other thing that I want to add is the phasing on this. I believe the plans that you see today or that I submitted show two phases. It sounds like I was wrong. So I think we're gonna do three. So I just want for public record that we will be amending this to do three phases and we'll be phasing it likely from north to south. The rationale behind that is, is to get the development closest to the existing neighbors done first and save the, you know, so just less construction in front of those homes for less period of time. So I will be making that adjustment to this, all that public records that you know, because I apparently I was wrong. So I apologize for that. And I will make that correction when this, you know, gets finalized, but I want to make that clear. And I think that's all I have, unless you have any questions for me. And I know Clark wanted to make a couple of comments as well. Cool. I'm out of here then. All right. Thanks. Stop sharing. Do you want this up at all? Do we need this up?
Totally fine. I, no, it's fine. It's not in my way. Clark Whitscomb, for the record, with Grand Park. A couple of things, just I want to make sure that everybody's in agreement on this. We are going to name, change the name. And it will be changed of record on all these documents. So I want to just make sure that that needs to be in the resolution that is recognized that. Yeah, it's fine. Get rid of the Willows apartments. So unfortunately, last Thursday after a Wednesday meeting, I had a not great meeting. And given the timeframe involved in what we've been trying to accomplish, as you guys heard, we submitted this in April. Had some challenges, resubmitted it, had some more challenges. It's been going quite a while. And cost of dramatically increased. We're still working on it, but reality is this, I think the HUD deal is most likely dead. And I want you guys to fully understand that. We made a very, very strong push, have invested a significant amount of money. Lots of applications, lots of studies, happy to share studies with your housing group or joint group or whatever y'all have done. If any of you guys would like, you know, this would be great for them not to go to waste. But more likely than not, this project will be built as a for sale condo project. And it's unfortunate, it's frustrating, about a fifty percent cost increase from April to last Thursday. We are preparing all of our final docs to get submitted to HUD on this deal and all right, had some tough calls. And so I want everybody to understand that, then change what we're doing. The zoning is a chance saying the entitlements are the same. There's no classification differential. But the product will be a for sale product. Because it's not, it's not going to be feasible for HUD and it's not, it's not feasible for anybody with the numbers that just came up. So kind of unfortunate. We've been working on this two and a half years, I think, two and a half years, long time. I think our original HUD application was like two and a half years ago, and we had a project in Granby that was in front of us called the Rodeo Project. It was a, you know, interesting, interesting twist of things that happened. And the rodeo didn't happen. And then we got up to played and now it looks like we're probably not going to happen now. Out of the meeting Thursday, we learned a lot of, we learned some alternative ideas that we're going to consider, that we're working on. I've already met with your staff in kind of a pre sketch meeting for a project that we already had that we planned on being a phase two to this project. That's two hundred and fifty seven units. We, we cornerstone, as you know, we're building the mill apartments, low income housing tax credit, forty year deed restricted sixty unit apartment project right now. It's under construction. We have two other lots that we're plating with the county on either side of that, that uses the same buildings and are intended to also be a similar multifamily product and hopefully maybe a phase two to that project. We'll see. There's, there's a lot of stuff involved in, in these various financing programs for these apartments and it's complicated. And then we've got a two hundred and fifty seven unit sketch plan project that is, we think a good long term rental project. And we are consultants on Thursday and some of the financiers just finishing one in Edwards, doing another in Steamboat are, are doing some modular apartment projects. And if we can get the design the way we want, that's our direction. Because we're really focused on our hor- housing shortages and the challenges that we face as a community and trying to solve those. And I don't think anybody here can try to say we're not trying to solve those because I think we're probably the only ones physically actually actively doing stuff. But it's hard. And I know you guys are working hard on different stuff and you're going to find that it's really hard and the challenges are great and the financing and the cost of projects are significant and getting greater. And this year in particular has been an unbelievable like nothing I've ever seen in my twenty six years of construction year. So and I think that's true for a lot of us on stuff. So just, I want y'all to understand that. And so point of me explaining that as well as kind of don't need to have the special hearing. We did notice it for final plat. So, you know, we can always renotice if we scheduled it regularly, but I didn't want you to Catherine to have to jump through hoops and be like rush, 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 because we were trying to make this deadline with HUD, get all the final approvals by then, but reality is the gap's so big. Not happen. Okay. The funding gap. Huge. This was a, this was a significantly expensive project to begin with. And when it, when the cost, the cost of it increased fifty percent. And the percentage increases, this, this was not, our company was not building this. This was a big HUD qualified contractor. We actually worked with two different ones. And there's, they're like me, they haven't seen anything like what they're seeing and inflation increases and literally one to two percent per month increases on projects that they're married to and building and they're dealing with it. But it's a very challenging time for the industry and to go build this in, in one, you know, this, this under, with them building it, this would have been finished in less than two years. All two hundred and four units. And you got to lock up, commit, it's, it's, it's their GMP contracts. And if this inflation continues, the person with a GMP, I have one on that one that was bid two years ago. It's not looking pretty. I'll be writing checks with what's happened and that, that's how it works. So I understand where they're coming from. Everybody, like I said, I think made a strong effort. So just key point, I want you guys to realize there was a big, big push. Well, it's been a long endeavor. It's too bad we missed the dates we missed. But kind of pressure can be off a little bit. We still want to continue the normal process. And if you want to have the hearing, if, if this gets approved tonight and you want to have the hearing and can get it set up, great. It's already been noticed. That would be ideal. But engineering wise, the engineering comments, we've submitted twice. The June set was the first response to comments. So we submitted in April, then in June. And our engineers almost finished responding with regard to the SIA. I think it's very accurate, very close. The comments that they're addressing now will be the, this would be the third supplemental of engineering plans are largely drainage related. So your water, your sewer roads. It's all staying, it's designed. And it works. Well, hopefully you have a deadline in here of the eighth. So we, hopefully that, I'm not arguing with you about that, that point. We're fine with the eighth. I think we can do that. It should be achievable. So I think the, the, the big resolution number that I would like to touch on initially is item one. Which says developer must agree to provide a dedicated right of way floor and construct Old Victory Road from the existing terminus at Mountain Willow Drive to Grand Park Drive as part of the subdivision improvement for this project, the timing for completing certain segments should be addressed in the essay. Point of me addressing that is, you know, first of all, we're already committed to Grand Park Drive or Old Victory Road. Sorry, you guys know that. We've talked about that a lot and we've built the whole road and you guys all know that. And it was contemplated as a regional road that would have partners. There's been no partners. So we built it in phases with projects as we've gone. Well, that's not completely true. Actually, we have Town and Winter Park now as a partner. And what's wrong with this note is that road today is built to American Willow Drive from Grand Park Drive to American Willow Drive. It's paved, it's finished. There's preliminary acceptance packages with your staff. We've been working to try to get that accepted. And so there seems to be a kind of a disconnect, be good for the board and staff to get on the same page because we would really like to get all that stuff accepted. And I think this note's just kind of simply wrong in the fact that the only piece that's left is from American Willow Drive to Mountain Willow Drive. Whereas we explained that planning commission is our construction staging area that we proposed when this project was going to be built pretty much all simultaneously. We, we needed some construction staging. The nice thing about breaking it into three phases, starting north and going south is we can probably do without that construction staging. But we will be using that for access to try to minimize impacts to the joining properties. It's our goal. And we're pretty sensitive to the neighbors on that and want to try to achieve that. So just one point is, I think that note should be clarified that the roads constructed, where we've been trying to give it to the town. And I think the only question is the timing of American Willow to Mountain Willow. Okay.
So with, with the delay in that, could you put restrictions on construction craft, traffics that they would stay off that residential street? And just use yours, the road, the staging area where it's not paved?
Well, yeah, I mean, we've done that. We did that in the mill. I liken that in the planning commission, we, you know, we said there'd be no construction traffic.
Right.
And we, and then we cut off the Leonard access and then the Norgan road's never been connected so that contractors literally, they have to go around to the road that we built all the way across Fire speak ranch for them. So they can't get physically to the construction that's under construction right now. Through the town and on those roads. And so this one's a little different because I don't have, this is kind of surrounded now by completed roads. So we can ask contractors and, and do the best to manage them, but, but our intent was to stage on that road. Again, I don't, I don't, I, I think that we can revisit that since this will get built in three phases and that gives us it'll more or less be one phase at a time. And that allows us to use the adjacent phases for staging, if that makes sense. Okay. So I think we can do away with that and, and in the, in the plans. Well, the design plans for this in April had the road all the way designed through Old Victory Road. It was noted that it wouldn't be built until the finish of the apartments. That same set in June has it, the set that Tony's addressing has it. And then we produced a new set to accommodate some acceptance stuff that we're trying to get done that has, that basically integrates the design from April in June that's in the Willows into the, what's called the Village, Old Victory Road Village Roundabout Plan that connected over to King's Crossing Road. So that's all on one plan set for your staff. And there's a, the section between American Willow and Mountain Willow is very clearly labeled on that plan set to say future construction. And I think we've documented that we would build it, where we build it at the end of the apartments. I'm happy to talk about it with staff in the essays and the phasing plan of kind of phase one, phase two, phase threes basically finished because that's from American Willow South. Okay. So there's really not much of this road left to be built. It was more about, there's still some earthwork to be done on it with this new design. There's no infrastructure in it, which makes that feasible. And and then construction staging. And if we give up the construction staging, then we probably integrate a piece of this SIA by SIA for the three different phases.
Well, I think the point there when the Willows was plotted, the town board agreed to not require the dedication and paving of Old Victory Road until filing four. And filing four has vaporized.
Right. I noticed that.
Yeah. Yeah, but it was not all the way through, if I remember right, Catherine. That was phased and it was what's now completed from American Willow. So it's completed and filing four that was vaporized and is being replaced by this will now come after the paving of Old Victory Road that was associated with filing four before. So I mean, effectively Old Victory Road, but for one small section is completed. And I have to say to the town to get it accepted.
And I haven't been involved in the discussion and the acceptance discussion talks. But we have asked for a timeframe of when that might be completed. And I don't think we've received anything from you today.
Yes, you did. We said it would be completed at the certificate of occupancy of the final phase of the apartments. Because that's when the construction.
And I don't think, I'm not going to argue with you, Clark. But I don't think that that was approved by Public Works or Engineering.
Okay. You just said you haven't received anything from us. So I'm just responding that, yes, we gave you, here's what.
That was added in the attorney correspondence finally, I think, because it was asked at a staff level and we didn't receive anything.
I don't know that really matters because I'm just sitting here telling you guys with three phasing plans and, and linking Old Victory Road to each of those phases and then eliminating it, eliminating it as construction staging. Since it probably isn't necessary, it kind of becomes irrelevant and it gets paved and there's two more segments to be paved that get built in conjunction with based the north phase, the middle phase. So I mean, I think we can note that as box checked, finished. We're all in agreement, I would hope. And then on the transit thing, I guess, I just want to follow up because I never heard a clear answer from Catherine and I heard Ed talking about trails.
That are.
Okay. So, so are we in agreement that, that this resolution note seven that was added today is going to be deleted because as Cat, as Leila pointed out, the transit plans on both those plan sets are the same. And they reflect where your transit's going today. I'd like to know, does it guarantee the transit's going to be there?
I think the document that's referenced in condition number seven is a transit plan that was incorporated into a reported document for the Meadows final plan, which was planning area three WC. And that page was attached to the draft conservation easement. And there are some parts that don't match up on this transit plan with the transit plan that was recorded and is part of an attachment to the conservation easement.
Okay. Sounds like now we're mixing things. I don't know what draft conservation is that you're talking about. And if we're talking about the stuff related to litigation, it in no way, shape or form relates to planning area two W, the transit plans required by the PDD, the annexation agreement or your code. And if you're talking about the trails that were shown on our private land and farm, and by the way, farm and ranch.
And you've seen that document.
Those are not, that is, there's nothing on there that labels any of that public and it's all outside the subdivision of planning area three. That is a big zoom out of some of our plans with background stuff. It shows my farm and ranch roads that we use to get to the hay meadows and the pastures. It shows some other potential trails that, yeah, well, I mean, we're kicking around, it's our property. We're going to kick around trails. There's nothing that makes those public, says they're public or otherwise, guys. And that's not transit. That's not what transit is. So I just want to be bluntly clear. I want this note to be clear. That issue is something that's being litigated. That issue is something that's being litigated. And that may go for a long time. But you're kind of mixing things here and I don't think that's palatable. Particularly in the context of your code and what a transit plan is defined as and what transit's defined as. We've met it. We're showing the same exact transit routes. And we're showing no background on anything that I own. That's not a part of these subdivisions, which is probably the proper way to do it.
Kent, are you able to elaborate on that? I know Rod's on this meeting. I don't know if he can chime in.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not as familiar with the transit plan map. I haven't looked at it for a while, but if there is a property interest shown on that map within what is the subject of this application and is it different than what is shown on the subject of this application, it should be consistent. But outside of this application boundary is probably not a concern.
Are we able to let Rod McGowan comment?
Rod?
Hello, everybody. I don't have a lot to add to that other than we have a, as noted, a recorded public transit plan for the Meadows that is inconsistent with what they've submitted for the Willows. So that to me is a problem and I think it needs to be resolved.
Well, can I address that? I guess, Rod, you finished?
Yes, at the moment.
Okay, well, I'm not aware of any other transit plans on any of the other FPDPs or otherwise that match 3WC. So is that a problem? And what is it? Was it a problem when we did the Meadows? They didn't match the prior ones? Because if that's the case, every FDP we've ever done is inconsistent. And as far as I know, the transit, the transit routes and transit system continues to evolve and change and.
Well, I think the Meadows Transit Plan is probably the latest one. So I think that's the controlling one.
Okay, well, but the transit portions of both of those are identical.
You've seen it. It's, you've seen it recently. The board has seen it.
Okay. So is it someplace that we can just give that piece?
No, I mean, we're showing the transit plans on both of these plans are identical.
Well, that's the hard part.
Ken addressed it exactly correct. Some part of the project is, doesn't have any interest. Public interest or the town's interest associated with things on another plan that are showing a very large area that consists of land that we're not developing, that's private property. It's kind of, you're right, basically, they're asking to add a bunch of trails to this plan that are not planned today and probably not going to happen on our private property. And, you know, we can show the farm and ranch roads that we use. But again, it's not related to transit. It's outside of the subdivision. So hence the reason transit is showing transit only. And our planner probably made a mistake using a background of sketches that we work on regular, on ideas. So I, I don't think this is a transit issue. I don't think it belongs on that plan. And I think the transit plan that's in here meets the code, meets where the transit is going today and is planned to go. So I think we've got that handled and I think that note should be, note seven should be revised or actually should just be deleted. Because it's, it's addressed. Those are my two comments primarily on the notes. One, note one. This isn't accurate in terms of Mountain Willow to Grand Park Drive. It should be amended to say from American Willow to Mountain Willow, since we've constructed and are trying to get acceptance of that section of Old Victory Road, which gives the transit system a full paved road surface to go on, which I think is very nice. And well, one section left, I guess, Bank of the West of Murdochs, but and then that note seven should just be deleted because the transit plan is Leila showed you all is the transit plan. It shows your transit route and shows the bus routes. They're identical. Those are my only comments. And if you could note that the name will change and that there will be three phases. We'll turn all this stuff around and get it to Catherine before the eighth she outlined in this and staff, the rest of staff. Thank you, guys.
Well, not necessarily just about the Willows project, but I do have a question about our transit issues that we have coming up. Can I ask about the King's Crossing Road? When that's supposed to be open November first? Plan on that?
Yeah, we would have loved to have had that open by November first.
I was just talking about our transit plan.
I can stick around for open forum if you need me to. Any other questions? For me?
So Clark, the, on your notes on the packet here concerning the sewer.
Oh, I'm sorry about that. I wanted to address that. Yeah, that was one of my notes and thank you, Andy, for reminding me. So that in oh six, actually oh five, the Forest Meadows Solar Subdivision Sewer Line was already in the ground. Fraser Sanitation District owned it all. It was totally unused. Well, it was barely used. Bank of the West used it and it was a problem. We connected to that with a 15 inch line. So we built a 15 inch line on Old Victory Road. It was originally designed as 15 inch, 15 inch across the highway to tie into the really big main that we installed from the Cousins Museum down to County Road Eight to serve both Grand Park and Rendezvous in Torle in Winter Park and is all part of the JFOC line. And the sewer district asked us to use the existing line until we got it to capacity. We agreed to, that's great, that's fine. We'll deal with crossing the highway later when we get to that point. So we're there, we're close. We're close enough and we're working on dusting off the designs, kind of old. And trying to get that finished up. That will be a separate plan set. It's really a separate project. We explained to your staff that with the HUD project, we needed to separately do a development improvement agreement for that independent of this project because we couldn't have offsite requirements in the HUD financing deal. And the same with Old Victory Road. It needed to be in a separate DIA that we were both, we were fine doing both of those. And we intended to do them. My goal would be to get the sewer installed next summer across 40, get all the permits handled this winter. Contract somebody hopefully December, January and have it knocked out. You know, maybe before Fourth of July, before it gets too busy. So, but long story short, we're, we're, that needs to be done. It's not at capacity yet, Andy, but with the other things that are approved being the Meadows, the Old Creek Condos that were under construction on. And then we, we just brought two, well, three other projects, kind of in a pre-skin review with your staff. That's Meyer Lot One. Another phase of Elk Creek Condos in the Meyer Lot Two, which is the 257 unit project that we're still trying to maybe do a HUD deal on. With all of that happening, this just has to be done. So basically Forest Meadows Solar Sewer Line that was designed to serve that project that had way more density than what we're going to put on those lots will service that what was Forest Meadows Solar Subdivision for the most part. There's going to be a couple of little crossovers. Nathan's building and Bank of the West will go in our 15 inch line across the highway. But we're on board with doing that. That's not a problem. Of course, yeah. We put up surety with you guys when we do, we call them DIAs because there's no subdivision associated with it. But it's the same thing as your subdivision improvement agreement. And that would have surety associated with it. And it would follow the same form with, that we've always done with Frasier. Other questions?
Well, to me, it doesn't seem like it's a final plan. Now.
Catherine, you explain that difference between final plan and preliminary plat, so.
So this is a preliminary plat and a final plan. The final plan is required to be processed in conjunction with a preliminary and final plat per the Plan Development District ordinance. So the plan, the final plan is going to change a little bit as the process continues and a final plat is submitted to staff to review. Yes, it is confusing.
And it's particular to the PDD, so.
And Catherine, if I may ask a question, is there a difference between what's required for a submittal for a multifamily apartment versus a condo?
The condo product is going to require articles of incorporation and all of the HOA documents to be reviewed by the town.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, when we, to answer that question, there's two, two kind of primary differences. Obviously, there's a tap fee structure difference, but then also there's fire district fee structure difference, which would be handled at the time of building permit issuance. And then when we go to do the condominium plat, that's another process we actually do with the town. That's another layer on top of this plat. This creates the lots. Then there's a condominium plat.
Doesn't as well flat that's required prior to the property.
So then we provide the condominium association document because we'll form a condominium association that will effectively care and maintain the structures, just like every other condominium project. So it's kind of another layer after this layer that happens.
Well, the change of dates and the urgency and the change of plans. I'm not ready to vote on this tonight.
The, can I just comment on that? The plans aren't changing. And the zoning is the same regardless of the product type. It, there's no difference. Multifamilies, multifamily, so. I don't know what changes if we don't vote on it tonight. Because I think we've addressed staff comments and will continue to work with them, which is kind of typically how it happens with these FPDPs and getting these things finalized to record. So they've got a nice, you know, well detailed resolution here. I'm recommending a couple of we would like to see a couple of changes to it. And other than that, we'd like to get the final plat on this project so that it can get hopefully still under construction next summer.
We'd be looking at changing the height of the buildings or try to keep them at that 41 feet?
No, the building heights can change. And actually, I think they're, I think Leila is slightly right. I think they're like 43 in the current designs. We've worked hard to, there's two different buildings and architecturally, I'm still not happy with the exterior on one of them, the smaller one. So there will be some architectural building facade changes likely, but I would say that they're not going to be any different. They're going to still stay three stories. These, these were designed with 10 foot floor to ceiling. They were designed very nice. It's kind of too bad that they're not getting those apartments, but it's a 10 foot floor to ceiling height. So it'd be hard to make them, you know, much taller. Elk Creek Condos are 45. The height limit is 75 here. But we, we, we just really didn't feel like it was appropriate in the context of what we built on the duplexes and the single family homes that existed there today, that it would really feel kind of awkward and be looming, 75 feet's pretty tall. Those are pretty much residential towers and, and we think something that's more in keeping with traditional design and what is in that area is more appropriate, which is what we've done here. We may have to make a couple of square footage adjustments on the plans to some units and some things like that, but not things that, you guys review that stuff at building permit. Doesn't affect the lots and the zoning and the entitlements that we're putting in place here. The entitlements are in place. The lots and the zoning aren't affected for now. To answer your question, yes, they can change the architecture. Likely maybe adjusted, more likely that it will be adjusted. I don't expect it to be any taller than the Elk Creek Condos. It would, I don't know what you would do to make them, yeah, those are pretty big roofs and these buildings are a little bit tighter than those. It's all about the roof and getting it to drape is where that kind of comes in.
I think the main point that public comment gave was the concern about 23W and it looks like it's addressed in this. That's, that's correct. So I guess the other question is the remaining checklist on the road. Does this have any impact on that? Getting done, not getting done, anything like that?
I'm sorry.
The remaining checklist on like, you know, the dedication hasn't occurred yet for the section that goes under the underpass and everything like that. Does this have any effect on that whatsoever?
We're still working on that with Winter Park. We've met with Craig several times and been in communication. We're finalizing our reviews to his comments and so forth, but one of the acceptance that that's been proposed by Clark is it's not just that loop road, you know, that these cross extensions, Grand Park, the roundabout, roundabout, Old Victory Road was expanding that to include all of Grand Park Drive all the way down to basically Market Street and also the section of Old Victory Road extending to the north from the roundabout, which right now it's at those construction drawings are sitting at, that our engineer Barry firm goes to reviews. A little ahead of ourselves with paving as opposed to, you know, following our procedures. So we're kind of trying to catch up on that. So that's, that's going to take a little review. But that would be part of that acceptance package. So.
So that is that part of this document?
Well, this, that's what.
That's what I'm wondering about number seven. If we take it out.
So we don't necessarily have that dedication yet. So number one is not an error.
Well, what you do have, yeah, you do have from us, the preliminary acceptance packages with the as-built drawings. You got the construction drawings, which also match what were in these packets melded into the overall what was built for the underpass. So that entire road network, which I think you drive on, that's what we're trying to get accepted, including Main Street that we built, which is where kind of in front of the Medical Center parcel that was part of that. So it, you know, it's a significant construction project, not related to any subdivisions. And with, you know, two parties involved, but with King's Crossings handled done with the Town and Winter Park. And we're just down to getting through the process with Frasier. And hopefully we can get that achieved because I think what we did there and how it's come about addresses what we've heard from your lawyers and your board repeatedly that we want you to finish and give us Old Victory Road kind of regardless of everything else. So we said, okay, well, let's just finish it. So at least we get the section and keep this one part dirt for construction staging, which was a really good plan, building this all at once. You need that area. With this change, you know, we can work on that in the SI with your staff on how to do that little segment. So my point is this says we haven't built from Grand Park Drive, the roundabout to Mountain Willow Drive. And that is technically incorrect. It is built from Grand Park Drive to American Willow Drive. So the only gravel piece that remains and there is a great change happening. So the only gravel piece that remains, and there is a great change happening on section being lowered down to accommodate the, the, the center kind of main entrance road. Our, our goal was kind of a primary entrance off of Old Victory Road to these. To lessen traffic on Mountain Willow and American Willow for this complex. That, that's the idea. So in that regard, there's no water sewer or anything in this section of Old Victory Road, which is really nice. So we had the flexibility to drop it down a little. And that earthwork still has to happen. That earth, this site has quite a lot of fill. So there's a cut fill balancing and then we were still importing material with the site. We still will be. Okay, so there's a lot of method to the madness of building the two hundred and four units on, I don't know, twelve acres or whatever it is. So anyway, I think it was pretty well thought through and, and a lot of people involved in, in kind of coming to how we go about doing it. And I'm just, I would just like the note to reflect that actually is only not built from those two road sections, Mountain Willow and American Willow.
I'd like to make a suggestion, Clark, just to try and move this along. You slowed down a bit. You've had to change plans. I appreciate you being honest with us tonight about that and the reality of construction. I'm in the middle of a tune out of the scale you are obviously, but it's, I'm trying to put a rope on, on a house that we've been on for two years and I'm getting parts that I ordered back March, you know, so it's, it's tough. But to take the, the strain off our staff and take the strain off of us, I, I think that this preliminary plat, plat resolution contains all the conditions that a lot of these you've addressed. But we leave these conditions on and then when, when you come back and I would hope that maybe come back in January when, when we've had our planner off for holidays. You guys have got holidays coming up. We don't rush the process. And we all know that when the process is pushed and rushed, you put us in a spot, you're in a spot. And we especially put our staff in a spot because we, we hire them to, 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 to go through everything in great detail to make sure you're protected, make sure the public's protected and just slow this process down slightly because we're not up against this, this deadline. So Catherine still doesn't have a quorum for next week. The planning commission had some problems last week. It's hard to, hard, you know, I mean, I think that they'd certainly be a lot, it'd be a lot easier for them to review with, with the, with all the input that you've given with Catherine able to cross check it, their legal able to cross check it. And we could, we come back with a, with a really good polished product when you're, when you're ready early in the year, so.
Well, here's Andy to kind of to your point. What, what I was talking about, what was on for next week is final plat.
Right.
We can't do final plat until preliminary plat's approved.
I know.
Okay, but you're talking about postponing this month. To your point about getting materials you ordered in March today.
Yeah.
I need to be ordering pipe.
Yeah.
For June and January.
Yeah.
This isn't rushed. So with all due respect, I need you to understand this was submitted back in April or actually before, I think. Then there was a very long review. Then we got a detail. We had meetings with the town's engineer Merrick. We addressed those comments with a second submittal that came back in June. That got reviewed. We're in a third round of engineering review comments that will not change in the line work on here for roads, water, sewer. Those have all been addressed and I think they're satisfied. It's purely drainage related and detention and how that's being handled. So the final plan that lays this out and the preliminary plat has, we've been at this for, I told you, we started this two, two and a half years ago, because it starts with a sketch plan, goes to HUD. This has not been rushed by any means, guys. And there's, there's nothing dramatically putting a different line for a phase, you know, adding a phase, which is logical, is not any substantial change in changing the name, frankly, should be irrelevant to you guys. Other than that, there's not one thing in their comments from staff that will change what's on these papers other than those two things, the name and the phasing lights. Yeah, but that's not even noted on here, Katie. It's, it's, it's the same zoning. It's multifamily. You know, maybe some of the condos will be rented. Who knows? But, you know, it's just a feasibility thing right now with the construction costs. It's just, it's not doable and happy to sit down with any one of you and, and share what we learned. So that you can understand it, but it's not, it's not worth our time getting into the depth of that right now.
Clark, would you, would you consider putting any of these units in the deed restriction program?
So these, Eileen are going to be sold. These are going to be outright sold.
Yeah.
So it won't be my decision, right? These would be you know, who the owner is that could opt in that program. But to that point and, and kind of a little bit unrelated, we are working on some additional homes in Elk Creek filing four around my three homes that we've already built. And also probably going to be advancing filing five to get that finished and do some stuff there and wrap that up. Those are all deed restricted homes. And, and then this thing that I'm working on getting final platted right now with the county in, in a perfect, perfect world, the Lytech affordable housing deal works out. For us, you know, kind of break even would be wonderful, probably won't, but in, in a perfect world, that would be great. And it's only that, you know, I bid that for a GMP over a year and a half ago. So I'm locked into those numbers. So I, I deliver that project regardless. So whatever it takes. We were ahead of schedule. We slowed it down because the lumber, lumber was like insanely crazy middle of summer. So lumber's here now, it's going up. But we're, I'm not giving up. I hope you're not on, on, we seem to be one of the only ones actually physically going forward and trying to do projects, which takes a lot of upfront soft cost money on sketch planning and designing. And, and it's all at risk. And so we have two lots that we would love to see a phase two to what we're building right now. And, and the, and the identical buildings, great looking buildings would go on this, which makes it real palatable. That could get constructed possibly starting next summer. So I guess to answer your question, you're getting the point of geez, what can we do to create more affordable housing? I get it. We have a lot of things that we're working on in our pipeline.
Right, but I believe you could sell these as even though you're saying they're going to be sold, I believe you can sell them as deed restricted.
Sure, you could deed restrict them and then, then the numbers start to get squeezed back down again. So let me just quick preface on how this works with the rental partner complex and the financing. The rental revenues have to be sufficient to service the debt. Right? And this is a big financing package, very big. And all of the studies were just updated at a great expense to HUD second update because of the time that's passed, et cetera. So those are just updated. Those studies say, hey, rent's increased. So, yeah, with the construction cost increases, you can absorb up to this amount. Okay?
So your answer is no.
My answer is no, but the, the point is if it's financially infeasible, we're not in the charity business in this instance. We, we, our doors can't say, I can't pay my staff if we don't have profits. Right? And, and the Lytech deal we're building for lots of reasons. It's physically under construction. It's going to be a break even deal. So, you know, there's, there's kind of this misconception. I think, oh, let's go say, Clark, good deed restrict this, well, you know.
I didn't say all of them. I just said a few.
Okay, the answer is no, I can't do it. We're working on a lot of other things.
Does any other trustees have questions for?
I hear you keep talking about all the projects. I don't hear anything about the marketplace on.
So that's a difference. Yeah. Let's stay on topic, please. We, we've got, there's twenty people online. We're, we're going to take comment from them. Kent's going to give some comments here in a second as well. So let's try and stay on. We can bring that after, but let's get past wherever we're headed with this. Any other trustees, comments, questions on this project? Sorry to be the bad guy.
I mean, I feel like this is something that the town wants to move forward with, but is number one going to be a sticking point where either cornerstone's not going to agree or, or the board isn't going to pass it. It's not on there.
What, what do you mean? It's still be on there. No, number one stays. We just change Grand Park Drive to American Willow. Yeah, it would still be on there.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we, we'll just integrate that with the SIAs for the, the two, the, the northern and middle phase. Working with your staff.
Or it could be reworded to state developer must agree to provide a dedicated right of way for and construct the remaining portion of Old Victory Road as part of the subdivision improvement agreement for this project.
That's totally fine too. The, the town has a legal description up to American Willow Drive, so. Yeah, that's totally.
Yay!
No, but I mean, yeah. Is there any other questions or comments?
I just want to say thank you for pulling two W and three W off this application and putting twenty three W. I'm back out in the metal.
Well, yeah, I mean.
I'm just telling you.
Yeah, you can think, you can thank your lawyer for working with us and, and following and acknowledging what's in the annexation agreement under section four point three. So I, I think we all came to resolution and we're going to handle doing these FPDPs differently on a go forward. Okay.
Any other comments, questions?
Yeah, I've got a couple of concerns. So I, like the rest of you, we're made aware tonight that this is transitioning to a condo project now. This resolution that staff put together and this whole application review process has been geared towards an apartment project. And I don't know without doing some research in the code whether or not that changes the complexion of how this would be viewed by staff. And therefore I don't know if the conditions are applicable to a condo project. If it's analogous to a, an apartment complex. I, I just don't know. I mean, I, I can't answer that off the, you know, shoot from the hip here. So I, I think it would probably be wise to give staff some time to review this before a decision is made at this point because we can't really advise you one way or the other definitively without doing some research. Another thing that I think would be good ultimately when this is voted on and a condition is made relative to Old Victory Road and its dedication and completion is that it not be, the, the timing on that not be tied in the SIA to future development, but there be a date certain in the future when that be completed. I think that's important. I'm not sure. It's another thing that I would like to check, but Mr. Lipscomb made a comment about building design changes being flexible. I think that may be something that has to be defined in the final plan, development plan. And I'd like to check that out and advise the board on that. You know, given that there's not as much of a rush here. I mean, I know Mr. Lipscomb talked about prices going up and whatnot and I can certainly appreciate that. I mean, we all go to the gas station and see what's happening in the grocery store. But I hate to recommend you make a premature decision tonight without seeing revised plans, having staff review this in the context of a condominium application as opposed to, as opposed to a, an apartment complex. They are both multifamily. There are distinctions though. I mean, you're selling airspace for the condominium project. You've got condominium declarations. You've got covenants HOAs that are connected to those projects, so they are distinguishable. And I just don't know without doing some research if there's a different approach from staff review perspect- perspective here as to how we should approach this and how I should advise you. So I'm not saying it's not a good thing, but the developer is proposing. I'm just saying that I'm not sure you can approve something that hasn't been originally submitted. Even if it's maybe only slightly different than what was originally submitted.
Okay. Thank you and, and all good comments. I, I think they're generally the same, but if I could make a suggestion, maybe this helps with Eileen and Andy's comment. How about if we just continue that you guys meet again in two weeks? We've, we've got a November eighth deadline in here anyway to get revised engineering to you. That's, I think, five days away. And how about if we just continue this for two weeks? Can be a much more brief meeting because all of this stuff can be addressed. We could probably turn this around with our edits. I'm looking at Lila. I think we can turn this around probably by before Wednesday of next week, like give us, you know, five to seven. I mean, these are pretty easy little edits. You know, we, we, we will need a, a name, you know, it could be the Katie at Grand Park or, you know, I don't know. But we, I think we could address this and turn a revision around very quickly that has these things addressed, might actually shorten up this resolution list. And and then we could talk about it again in two weeks. And hopefully in a lot shorter timeframe.
Cancel the planning commission meeting then next week.
Yeah, that's what we have to do. That's your final plat, Andy.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah. I think, look, once we get engineering plans approved and, and preliminary plat, you know, at that point I can start bidding it out and trying to lock up. We got a lot of contractors in, in December, January for pipe work next summer. Yeah, I mean, it's like nothing I've ever seen, so. But if, anyway, that's my recommendation. I'm fine with that. If, if you all are want to go that direction and we're agreeable.
Okay, thank you. Catherine, what do you think about?
I mean, I think that's fine. Continue it for, continue this discussion for two weeks. And then I don't know that we need these revised drawings by November eighth.
Well, no, I'd rather just get them. I, I like tight deadlines. We can handle it.
That'll be my birthday present. I can't wait.
We'll try to get it a day before, so you can spend your birthday reviewing it. How about that?
Great. Okay, thanks. Any other? Okay, public comments. Let's start out here in the room. If you'd like to make a comment, raise your hand. I guess there's only one, Travis. If you live in the town of Frazier.
My name is Travis Powell. I live at eight twenty one Wolverine Lane, Unit A. I've lived in Frazier for twenty five years. I love this valley more than anything. And it's sad for me to see what Clark has done to it. Clark, you say that you're building houses and condos and apartments to solve the housing crisis. Not for the common man here. I doubt a lift operator, a bartender, anybody working a Safeway or ski patrol can afford in any of the places that you're building.
Travis, you, can you address us instead of calling Clark, please? Thank you.
I just, what he calls affordable and what I call affordable and the common people to live in Frazier, I think are totally different. You know, I just, like I said, I drive by that meadow every day and I drive by that marketplace and it disgusts me. It is an ugly building. It is an eyesore for this town and this county. And the fact that it is still there just breaks my heart. And the fact that you're letting it sit there really breaks my heart as well. So I just don't think that he should be allowed to build anything else until he completes that project. And then if he is going to build affordable, make it affordable for the common people that live in this valley. All right, like I said, I've talked about ski patrol, talk about lift operators, I've talked about bartenders. So I want to actually make this town run. Not the, not the lawyers, not the second homeowners, not real estate agents, not the people who own a second home. The people who actually work and live here and care about this community, unlike some people. Thank you.
Thanks Travis. Okay, that is the only public in our, here. Is there anybody online? Yeah, three minutes each. So Paula, I see her hand is up.
Yeah, this is Paula Stewart. I live at eighty seven Byersview in Frazier. And I was disturbed by the change in, from apartments to condominiums that was announced tonight by Mr. Lipscomb because as the previous gentleman just. as the previous gentleman just mentioned, I think we have a tremendous lack of affordable housing, not just, not just affordable in the sense of discounted, but in the sense of teachers and lift operators, as he mentioned, and bartenders. And the fact that he's now changing this whole paradigm, if you will, from purchasing condominiums, which you know darn well will be bought by second homeowners from Denver and other areas at top dollar. That's how he's going to recoup his increase in construction costs. And I think it's a travesty on the community to allow him to change from apartments that people could potentially rent and and afford even in multiple, you know, four people in a in a two-bedroom apartment as opposed to a second homeowner having a condominium. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. Anybody else? Again, to provide a public comment, please just raise, digitally raise your hand and we will unmute you. Okay, go ahead, Jane.
Hi, thanks. I just wanted to echo the comments on affordable housing and the need for affordable housing and we thank Clark for adding affordable housing out in Byers Peak Ranch, but there's still more needed and I would like to question the the fact that the sales prices for many of the properties that Clark is selling is going up, is probably doubling from what it might have been three or four years ago. So from a revenue perspective, I expect there's a lot of additional revenue there that is not offset by increases in construction costs. So when we hear Clark crying wolf about how tight the costs are, I question that and encourage the trustees to really question that to him. Thanks.
Thanks, Jane. Anyone else? Okay, let's move on. No, no, thanks. Okay. Any further trustee? Motion to.
Do we need a move to continue this topic to our next meeting?
Second. All in favor?
I.
Host. Thanks. Thanks, everybody for coming. We appreciate it. We are now at ordinance four eight five water wastewater advisory.
Hi, Travis.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. As you recall, in June, there was a discussion that came before the board about whether or not the Water and Wastewater Committee should continue. There was a, I think, a resolution or on or a vote coming before the board to disband the Water and Wastewater Committee. There was no motion made so that 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 effort failed. And basically, we were charged with finding a a better purpose for the Water and Wastewater Committee and maybe making some refinements so that this this organization could be a little bit more productive and take a bigger part in what's going on in our discussions with Water and Wastewater. This ordinance here, ordinance number four eighty-five, there's been several discussions over a series of months with the Water and Wastewater Committee. There was a consensus among the committee to make some changes to to the municipal code. I will just briefly go over that. We've made those those changes in in bold, underlined in your packet there. The first change was to change the composition from seven members to five members. The original composition included three members from the community and four trustees. It, the discussion centered around the fact that we don't necessarily need a quorum of the Board of Trustees to do an advisory role for the Board of Trustees. So reducing that number seemed to make sense and bringing that down to five. Also was a change to change that to the Water and Wastewater Advisory Committee instead of just the Water and Wastewater Committee. Another change, we wanted to firm up the responsibilities under section two dash ten dash eighty to meet quarterly.
It's in the very back of the package.
Like the last documents in your packet. And we identified that those meetings would be in January, April, July, and October. And that is the bulk of the changes. There's still the appeal process that's part of the the Water and Wastewater Committee. And the Water and Wastewater Committee will still be discussing, you know, the projects that we have such as the industrial pretreatment program that we just kicked off, the EQR study. You know, so these are the changes recommended to our municipal code. Again, the bulk of this is just reducing the number and reducing the amount of trustees that's on the board.
So Ed, if there, why is there an appeal process for the Advisory Committee? Because they're, I mean, they don't really make decisions that are binding at all, so.
Well, in the original code, they they do make decisions. Actually, there's no change to the fact that they would make binding appeal. Maybe that's why there was four trustees on there. When I talked to Rod, the thought was that, just like the ordinance says, if if someone, staff level, you know, planning department or myself receives a request, we want to waive our fees. We want to do this. You know, we we have guidelines that we follow. A good example is someone was working on a building. It was unoccupied at the time. They wanted to waive their their water fees while while the building was under construction. Well, we have no provision for doing that, so my response was no, we can't waive the fees. Because we don't waive fees for people who have second homes that are just out for sure, a couple of months at a time. And those fees are required to to pay this. Technically, they could have gone to the Water and Wastewater Committee and appealed my decision. There's some notification processes in there. And then the Water and Wastewater Committee would have made the final judgment on whether or not.
So they can't make binding decisions. Got you. Okay.
But only on appeals. They they can't change, you know, our capital plan. They can't change the direction of our of our operations and maintenance. They serve more as an advisory function.
Can they have a, can they make a decision to waive fees?
No.
Okay. What binding decisions do they make?
Whether or not to overrule staff's decision.
More confused. I mean, so so could you give us an example of a binding decision, wastewater, water wastewater advisory committee might make?
Let's use the example I was just explaining. You know, someone wanted to stop paying their fees. Their commercial tap fees is more expensive than a residential.
You just said fees aren't.
There, there's a base fee, base water and sewer fee.
Sure.
And and then there's a usage fee with your with your bill. And what they wanted to do is they wanted to eliminate the base fee because they said the building was vacant. And I've had that request several times. My answer is no. The reasons I stated earlier. They could have go to the Water and Wastewater Committee request an appeal of my decision. And the Water and Wastewater Committee would would make a decision. They would decide, no, we'll uphold the town manager's decision on this. I will grant the appeal.
So they can't waive fees then?
That would just come before the, right? I'm glad Rod stayed on. Rod?
Well, it seems like that went around in a circle.
Yeah, yeah.
If they're appealing.
Because the example.
Rod, can you advise us on this one?
Yeah, absolutely.
What was the question?
Could I make it again? So so Rod, there, we have an appeal process in this revision to the Water and Wastewater Advisory Committee, we're calling it. We would call it now if we pass this. What binding decision can the Water and Wastewater Committee make? It would have to be appealed. Because they're an advisory committee. That's, it's just got to be baffled.
Well, it kind of depends on what powers you delegate to them. If you delegate them the power to make a decision, then the appeal process would apply to that.
Have we delegated them any power to make decisions?
Sorry, inter.
For what decisions? We just, I asked about fees and you said that they can't make decisions regarding fees.
Well, let's not mix things up. If 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 they, if someone asks for an appeal, they can grant the appeal.
But of what? Just, I'm sorry.
So.
Did you guys ever get those, Parnell, or?
Nobody used an example. They've never, they've never actually had an appeal come to them.
Yeah. And. But it's just weird that we would call somebody an advisory committee and then grant some kind of power for decision making.
They struggled with it, too. They were like, we don't want to debate an appeal decision with the Board of Trustees.
Why don't we just change it? Why don't we change it to make an appeal goes to the Board of Trustees?
Yeah.
I I think if we if we take that element out back where we were three months ago, there's really nothing for them.
No, they're an advisory committee. That's why we wanted to keep them three months ago.
Well, you can take the whole appeal process out of it.
Yeah, I mean, unless they have some, we've granted them some power to to make some kind of final decision, then there's no need for an appeal process, so.
You said that's in our code.
Do you want to look at that again?
No, that was.
It sounds like we need clarification.
Yeah, yeah.
So let's have clarification.
Kent, look at it and see if they've got some kind of authority, so.
And I remember.
Or gives Kent a chance to look at that and see. Yeah, get up to speed.
Yeah.
I'll try to keep you out of that one.
And I remember it being quarterly meetings unless one was called.
Okay, let's not go by memory. Let's go ahead and get the facts.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Has a change.
Let's change. We have our attorneys look. Sorry, but we're going to go around and search on this.
No, she was talking about.
I'm talking about the, the, there's no history of this.
Right.
The the meeting frequency is all, so.
Yeah, he can't look this up.
So. Well, he can look it up, but if it's not in there, then we don't have.
It's no, but the change.
No, but the change was to, from monthly.
I'm surprised, I'm surprised, I'm surprised that there that are three are not here as involved as they wanted to be.
If I, if I could just say something, our code never identified when the meetings would be.
Right.
Never identified that. When we first started meeting over the summer, I recommended, so we could work things out, that we meet at least monthly. So we were meeting monthly, but that was not in our code. That was just a recommendation. In fact, our last monthly meeting, we agreed that we're not going to meet again until once a quarter. So they're not going to have the next meeting until January. But they wanted to codify that we'll at least meet quarterly.
At least.
At least quarterly.
Right. And so then we could, someone can call one.
I know.
That's, that's what I'm saying. And I'd like to know who can call them.
Okay, open forum. We have one guest here in the audience. If you'd like, if you'd like to make something, you get three, you get three minutes. It's not anything that is already on the agenda, so something that is not on the agenda.
Thank you all. Clark Lipscomb, again, for the record. Did you, did you start the stopwatch? I'm not going to even take a minute. You know, there seems disappointing here, someone like Travis in his comments and I I just want to point out, there seems to be a misconception and a misunderstanding about, one, what our company is doing for affordable housing and housing in general. We need housing. I was a ski bum. I was a liftoff. For your, in fact, I cleaned rooms for one ski season. Little people, few people know that, but two seasons in a row, I was a ski bum. And time of my life, sometimes, maybe I'll go back to that soon. I don't know. But the Mill Avenue Apartments are forty-year deed restricted to twenty percent to eighty percent of median income, twenty to eighty percent of median income. There's a rent schedule that goes with it. It's based off of published grand county incomes. And these people that continue to say this stuff, that you're not building anything that we can afford, they need to look at that. And I'm I'm guaranteeing you, they are in the realm of twenty to eighty percent because it is meant to help provide workforce housing, service industry housing for the workers that we all need. Okay, now, I also think it's incumbent on our businesses to be stepping up and doing the things they need to do to help get the employees they need. And I I'm open to have, Jane Mather can come, she's a finance person, she can come into my office and I will sit down with her and show her the numbers. And she can tell me how anyone can make that work. Okay, because HUD wasn't going to approve it. And unfortunate, but you know, I'm open book and I've offered to all you guys and all your housing stuff and all the discussions and talks that you've had. You can have every single report that I have paid for. And I will be glad to share each and every one of you the numbers on that apartment deal. And if one of you think you can make it work, over to you. Make it happen. Okay, so that offer's out there. I'm telling you, it doesn't work. Okay, and and I'm just kind of tired of this, you know, hey, the biggest employers in this valley aren't doing what my little company is doing to address housing. So get realistic, people. Travis, go do your homework, understand what's getting built, understand what the rents will be before you come in here and make those slanderous comments. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody online have? Okay, updates?
Well, I got kind of a spooky update. I was in a coffee shop in the town of Winter Parks. Three or four board members were there. And they asked when we're opening up King Crossing Road. And I told them, well, I thought it was supposed to be open November first. Then I heard it hasn't been accepted. It's not even preliminary accepted by the town of Fraser. The next comment was, well, how does the second lawsuit sound? So I don't know if they can sue us or not.
So you're saying Winter Park Board members, Parnell, just to be clear?
Two or, two or three. I mean, I don't know if they're all on the town board, but I know they're all Winter Park people that live in Winter Park. I know a couple of them are on the board for sure. So that's, you know, something to think about. That road's not open, we lose our bus transit.
Okay. Any other updates?
I've had the opportunity to talk to a few trustees about the individually, not in a coffee shop, in groups of two or more about the old ordinance we discussed briefly, the ordinance number two seventy, the four-dollar square foot fee that we used to levy on new construction. And I would really like to see that brought back to, updated and brought back to the table for us to discuss in January. I know that, you know, we can't go backwards and get this fee that that we used to collect and get it for all the years in the past, but we've got to start somewhere. And I think we, I I have to agree with Clark and I often do, sometimes at least. And we all know it's painfully obvious that we can't build affordable housing at market. And we all know, it's painfully obvious that we can't build affordable housing at market rates. It just can't be done. And, and so we've got to come up with revenue streams, diverse revenue streams, to help subsidize building housing. And one of the revenue streams, I think, should be this ordinance. And this ordinance would be easy to add to this, that if it's a deed restricted housing unit, if you're building a deed restricted house or deed restricted condominium complex, this fee does not apply. So that, that differentiates between for, for market rate and employee housing. We've got to find some way to subsidize the building of employee housing. It just can't be done. We, we can definitely tweak our, our, our regulations, do things to make it slightly more affordable, but we'll never close that gap. The only way to close that gap is to subsidize it. And we're going to go for a mill levy with a new, or we may go for a mill levy with a new housing authority, but that is only one part of the financing equation. We, we need to have that revenue stream come from different parts, segments of the economy. So I'd like to at least, at least put this on the tape.
Anybody else?
I've gotten some complaints about construction traffic on Mill Avenue and I think Katie might have too by her reaction earlier. So I don't know. I've seen one video.
A lot of, like, a lot of construction traffic on Mill Avenue. Just in the neighborhood sending me pictures and.
Is it big trucks or pickup?
They're attaching the asphalt.
There was like a steamroller going by at one point.
Asphalt, which the town desperately wants to do.
Can you?
That's good.
That's what the role is.
Okay.
It's an update, not a Q and A.
Okay.
Anybody else have updates? The video, send the video to whomever you need to, down home.
What's your?
Sure.
Okay, what, any other updates?
I just would like to note that the mayor is back and fully refreshed. And all our meetings while you were gone were really easy.
Really? You know, I leave for whatever, five or six weeks and come back and, yeah. I heard Eileen did an amazing job, so thanks for, thanks for filling in for me while I was out.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
You can't get too many of those.
She, I said, I said, well, can I just go back on vacation? And she says, you only get one annual vacation. One annual vacation.
A one-term vacation.
I, I want to see a rate fee reevaluation for water and wastewater taps on apartment buildings because I think when we voted to instill the one we have now, we were thinking of like four units. And I don't think that our water and wastewater funds are going to survive multi-hundred unit applications. And that's one reason I wanted to know who can call. A, a meeting of water, wastewater before January. Amen.
And I'll add one more on that maybe next year, we take a look at putting a cap on short-term mills.
I think you're starting to dive into people's personal property rights at that point.
Yeah, I'm just telling you.
Let's do it.
Something to discuss later.
Or fees, Katie too, so looking at, looking at realistic fees on them, so.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else?
I moved to adjourn.
A second. All in favor?
Hi.
Only 10 minutes late. It's not bad.
That's, it's not official, but. I guess.